And next, we would like to recognize our Martin Luther King Scholarship recipients. Dr. Ackerman?
Gianni Drab, Calvin McCoy, and Katherine Regan. Katherine can't be here tonight because she's got COVID, I guess I can just say. So, I want to tell you that this year, every year, our scholars are just spectacular. But there was a bond this year that was created by the scholars themselves that went above and beyond anything I've ever seen before. I want to first say that I'm not going to introduce the scholars because one of the things that is required of the Martin Luther King recipients is to learn life skills. And one of those is introducing people. The scholars learn how to introduce their parents if there's a, for example, if there's a hierarchy, for instance, if they were going to introduce their parents to the President of the United States, he would get the honors. So they have to be able to decide which one of the two people that they would introduce would get the honors. And it's something that we strive to do in terms of the entire Board of Trustees. So anyway, I'm just going to talk a bit about the rigorous process it is to receive the scholarships. We gave 12 scholarships to students in all different parts of New London County. Each scholarship was $25,000. So we're hoping that we'll be able to defray the costs that you will incur. When we choose the scholars, we look at grade point averages, class ranking, hours of community service, and we look at what they're going to study when they go to college. What activities that they have engaged in during their high school years. We take a look at test scores if they are presented to us. But the big thing is the interview. If you make it to the interview, that's a Herculean job. And then from the interview, we decide who gets the scholarships. Then it really begins. You have to come to my house every Saturday until dinner, and that's usually from the first Saturday in September until the third Thursday in October. You have to be able to write your speech and give your speech, not read your speech, not memorize your speech, but give your speech. It's a difficult job, even I'm having trouble doing it right now. And one of the things that you have to do is when you do your notes, you can only have five words. And then on the Saturday before the dinner, I say, okay, you can have three more. I cheated because it's so hard to do. So I don't have three words, I have about 25. But then, I'm 18 and you're 18.
So, you decide who goes first.
So, if you're introducing Calvin, I think Calvin should be up there with you.
I'm introducing Katherine.
Oh, you're introducing.
I'm introducing Katherine.
That's right.
And Katherine's online.
She is.
Hey Katherine.
Hi Katherine.
So Katherine is a full IB diploma student, and she is planning to major in pre-med. She's taking the pre-med track. Katherine is also a member of the BSU, the Black Student Union, and she does many other clubs at Fitch because she's also a NHS National Art Society president. She's the president, I'm the vice president. But more as a person, Katherine is just someone you want in your everyday life. She's always super joyous, and she just brightens up your day, even it's a bad day. She's always the person that can combine friend groups. She's always the one that will stand up and say anything whenever she has the chance. I just think Katherine is just such a person you need to have in your life.
Is Calvin going to introduce you?
Is Katherine going to say anything? Was she going to say anything or no?
Katherine, if you want to say something, this is something that we didn't anticipate. So if you want to say something, by all means, do it now. And if the board has questions for you, they'll ask.
Well, I just want to thank Gianni for that lovely introduction. I've gotten to know a lot of the 12 scholars, including me, over these past couple months. And honestly, I have to say that these have been like the most rewarding months of my life, if I'm going to be honest. It's just like, we're put through, of course, a lot of tests, not only as scholars, but as people. And I think this has just been generally so rewarding, not only in the terms of like life skills we get, but like lifelong friendships that we receive. So, thank you.
If you have any questions for Katherine, by all means.
Katherine, can you share what your goals are in or beyond college, if you've formed them yet? Thank you.
Yeah, so I, well, first I have to, after college, I'm planning on going to graduate school because if, I'm kind of exploring careers right now. I'm not really sure, I'm kind of just letting life take me where it wants to take me. But my initial plan is to go in like the pre-med track and possibly study gynecology and specifically like become an OB-GYN, just because I feel like that's a field that combines both like medical knowledge and advocacy. Because a lot of women feel that, including myself, feel that when they go to an OB Jo and they feel like underrepresented. And I actually wrote my scholarship essay on, to get to the MLK Scholarship, on how the decision over the summer of 2023, the Roe v. Wade overturning affected specifically Black women in America, and how reproductive healthcare affects specifically Black women. So that's something that I might want to, that I'm definitely going to explore in my postgraduate years.
Thank you so much.
Katherine, can you share with the board, what was the most surprising thing you learned in becoming a scholar, after we began practicing? What did you learn that was most surprising to you?
The most surprising thing, I always thought that I was a good public speaker, and I always thought that was something that I pride myself in, but I didn't realize how much courage and strength it takes to go up and present a good, honest speech in front of a group of people. I'm completely off the fly right now talking to you, but there are so many skills I learned from specifically Dr. Ackerman and also my fellow scholars that helped me be more present in conversations and also more commanding of a room. And it's just something that I'm going to take with me until I am talking to the Congress, I guess, United States Congress.
Thank you Katherine, that was fabulous. And I'm glad that you mentioned your essay, because I had that in my notes, but I didn't say it. I read the essays again before I came tonight, and they are so powerful. They're just fabulous. That's it for me.
Thank you Katherine.
Of course.
So, who's next? Katherine, you can stay by all means.
Would you like me to introduce Calvin?
Sure.
Oh, all right.
Is that the plan? Is that okay?
That's the plan. He's coming up.
Okay. So, members of the school board, it is my honor to present to you a very distinguished student from the dinner in October and the Equi Medical Service at St. James Church. Many of you may know Calvin as an involved student, class president, and senior athlete, star athlete in both football and track. But today I wanted to talk to you more about Calvin as a person. Calvin is incredibly kind, ambitious, funny, and a brilliant speaker who puts thought behind every single word. Calvin is a role model for every single student in the Groton Public School system. He cares deeply about his family, his community, his teammates, and his peers. It is hard to sum up Calvin in such a short introduction, but the final thing that I'm going to say is that Calvin is a perfect representation of Dr. Martin Luther King's legacy. May I present to you Calvin McCoy III.
Thank you, that was lovely.
Very nice. So Calvin, follow Katherine and just say something.
Say something about yourself.
So, my time with the MLK Scholars, I feel, has impacted me greatly. I've learned how to speak in front of a roomful of smaller people, because I came to realize that speaking in front of a little bit of people is a lot harder than speaking in front of a lot of people, because you feel the pressure and the weight of the room. And you could see everybody just staring at you. But, working with Katherine and Gianni and my other scholars, has, they've brought me a lot of feedback on how I can improve on my public speaking, because before this, I wouldn't say I was a strong public speaker. I'm always active in the class, I answer questions and everything. But when it's just me talking, it's always been a struggle to get it worked out and to completely gather my thoughts and put them together into one, into one idea. And so, I would like to thank my fellow scholars and Dr. Ackerman for really, really helping me improve on that big struggle of mine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Hi Calvin, congratulations and congratulations to everyone, all the award recipients. Just curious to know also like your plans for after graduation?
Thank you. So, after graduation, sorry, after graduation, I want to go to college and study finance and someday, the plan was to someday earn, own my own financial firm and really help a lot of people understand really what it, like the whole financial world, because growing up, I never really knew anything. And I would always talk to my dad for advice, and he didn't really know a lot. So I would like to inform people a lot more on like what really the financial world is and how you could, how it could be more accessible to all people.
Thank you. That was a good question.
Thank you.
So similar to Katherine, what was your essay about, very briefly?
So my essay was about Katanji Brown Jackson and her process in becoming the first African American woman on the Supreme Court. And I just, I just thought she was really inspiring, her story, and not only her story, but how much adversity she faced while becoming a Supreme Court Justice. The crazy questions she was asked, and what she faced, and then overcoming it and being in the position now where she is.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, and so I would like to now, to have the pleasure to introduce my fellow scholar, Gianni Drab. Gianni Drab is a very engaged student in extracurriculars. He, he's my co-captain on the football team. He's very involved in robotics, and he's also, he also plays golf in the spring. Gianni as a person is very easygoing, but he's very dedicated in everything he does. And he's also dedicated in getting other people to where he is. If you guys had the chance to hear a speech, you would have heard an inspiring speech on how other people can be elite like he is and get to where he is and all the things he's done, the countless hours he's put into not only himself, but other people. The other week, last week actually, preparing for our midterms, Gianni texts me at 12 o'clock asking if I was ready for my calc test. And that's just like the great friend and person he is. And I've had the pleasure of knowing Gianni my whole life. We've grown up together. And so, just having him here for me whenever I needed to just help me and always having my best interests in mind, has been a great, it's been a great, I've had the great opportunity of being with him and knowing that it's not only me, but the young kids on the football team or the new people in robotics that he can help coach up to be where he is as well. I just want to thank Calvin, that was, that felt very, very meaningful. I'm honored.
And this is the way the students are every week when they come to my house. And I've never seen feedback like this, honest, deep down, and productive, just, I know you're going to stay together forever, I can just tell that. So thank you very, very, very much.
And Gianni, would you like to say a couple things about your next steps going forward?
So my next steps is I want to pursue aerospace engineering, and that's got to deal with rockets and jet engines and launching satellites into space. I've just always dreamed of that since I was a little kid, and I would just always read books, watch videos about space and stars. So I've just pursued engineering classes and robotics, just to show that I really want to be an aerospace engineer.
That's exciting.
Thank you.
And Gianni, what was your speech about?
So my speech was about being elite, because what happened was, I was in eighth grade, and I didn't really have a lot of motivation. I had good grades, I just played video games, I didn't really have a lot going for me, and I just said, yeah, I'm probably just going to go to an Ivy League school. That was just something that I thought could happen out of nowhere. But one day, this, my father's high school best friend named Brian came into my life, and he asked me the question, why not be elite? And I just began to think about all the possibilities of actually going to an Ivy League school and the troubles and the hardship that I would face along the way. And through my high school years, taking AP and IB classes, I've learned that I've had to stay up very late nights, even after long practices, making sure I get all my work in, study for my test, and prepare for the next day.
Have you heard from any of the schools yet?
I've heard from Virginia Tech and WPI, and I've gotten into both.
Good.
A question for all three of you, what's your dream school?
So my dream school would be MIT, and I've just, I went to Boston and I explored school, and I'm just like, man, I really want to go here, top aerospace school, it'd be, I'd be extremely honored to go to that school.
Fantastic. What's your dream school?
My dream school is Georgetown University in DC. I visited the campus this summer, and it's beautiful, and they have a great school of business.
Great.
Katherine, I know yours, but you can say it out loud, your dream school.
Yeah. So, I actually have committed to Wellesley University, Wellesley College, I'm sorry, Wellesley College in Massachusetts, so I believe it would be sacrilegious to not say that that is my dream school. They actually gave me a full ride scholarship. So, yes, Wellesley, woo-hoo, that is my dream school. And I got in.
Well, congratulations to all of you.
Congratulations. You all, you all inspired us at the Martin Luther King banquet in October, and we learned a little bit more about each of you at the Equi Medical Service and some of your other skills and artistic talents. And thank you for coming tonight and sharing your stories with us. Thank you all.
Tutte fette bene.
And Katherine, rest up.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Carmita Hodge is in the audience, she is the advisor for the scholars.
Queen of Vice.
And also Matt Brown, the principal of Fitch High School. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Chair, just a quick point of privilege, is Beverly Washington going to be coming in tonight in person?
She is a remote.
Okay. I just noticed we're a little crammed in down here, and Ms. White does not have a microphone. Could one of us leave frog on down?
Yeah.
Yeah, move on down.
Do you want to make the move?
There you go. Thank you.
Very good. All right, so next we have Dr. Charles Hughes, the Associate Commissioner of Education, online to speak to us about the Connecticut Literacy Program. So we'd like to take an opportunity, I know that he has other commitments this evening, has a limited amount of time, and we appreciate his time discussing this topic with us tonight.
Good evening, Dr. Hughes.
Good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for inviting me here tonight. Thank you Superintendent Austin for coordinating with us and allowing me to join you here tonight. You know, I'm really here tonight to support a lot of the work that Superintendent Austin and her team have been moving forward in the space of K through three reading instruction. Many of you may have known, or maybe not, that the legislature passed a requirement for districts to implement curriculum for the K through three grade levels that is aligned with what we know and refer to as the science of reading, the research-based practices that align with what we know works to support students to learn to read. And as big of a shift as all this is, I'm really here to kind of affirm and support the work that your team has done. Under the legislation, it requires that districts be in partial implementation of a state-approved literacy plan by July 1, 2024. Right now, Groton is already in place and has already met that requirement with the phonemic awareness and phonics programs that you have in place using Hegarty and Ufly, as I know that Superintendent Austin and I have discussed, that has really been moving students forward and really engaging teachers with the implementation. And I know that the next step of the district is focused on the purchase of decodable text, it's kind of that next layer of work, specifically the G-O-D-S. The State Department of Education released funding, as approved by the legislature, to support districts' purchase programs that were approved for implementation. And G-O-D-S is one of those components of programs, what we call our compendium of resources. And your district is really exploring not only its full use, utilizing the full amount of the right-to-read funds, but you're also, as I've been talking a lot with Susan about the implementation and exploration of the next steps, which is a really important piece of the process. Your district is really taking the care to understand the components of the other vocabulary and comprehension pieces. And really, this is a time and labor-intensive process. But we are here, and again, I'm here to support the work of Groton, as well as other districts across the state, to make sure that you all are supported and understand and have that opportunity to explore really what we're, we and the legislature has put forward to ensure the science of reading is implemented for every last child in our state. Of course, the other piece of this is the professional learning for teachers, such a critical piece. And again, Groton Public Schools is leading in this work. Susan has been a part of the masterclass that is, again, another coordination between the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents and the State Department of Ed, to make sure our leadership across the state is trained in the science of reading so that the leadership can then support the district implement. And Susan has been a great participant in the Cohort Three, and that's also led to other relationships. And actually, Susan and I have known Margie Gillis of Literacy Howe, some of the leaders in the field for literacy instruction. We've known her for a number of years now, and I understand that your district is looking to deploy professional learning for teachers. And that's really important, because no matter the program that your district might settle on, it's going to take time for teachers to learn those programs, but then also be equipped with those research-based strategies. Many probably already know already, but certainly make sure that we increase the frequency at which all students have access to these high-quality instructional approaches. So ultimately, this brings your district to, or I should say, into compliance to this point in time with the legislation, and really right on track to meeting the full extent of the legislation, which is full implementation K through three by September, start a school July 1, 2025, essentially September. So again, I wanted to kind of be here to support and lend support to the work that Groton Public Schools has been doing, and to affirm that work, and be available if there is any questions that you may all have, at least from a state perspective that I can lend.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. It is a privilege and honor to be able to work with you and the state and with other fellow superintendents around. I know my assistant superintendent, Dr. Phil Piazza, also has a really great working relationship with a lot of the assistants, and having Lisa Corcoran onboard K through five literacy with her expertise, really, and the principals, it really makes a wonderful team to do this work. And absolutely bringing our teachers on board, our literacy specialists, really, it's a community, it takes a village, right? So, it's much appreciated. Thank you.
And I've had the pleasure of working with the team in a number of meetings along the way here, and great people in Groton doing the right thing and moving in the right direction, so you're all to be commended.
Does anyone have any questions for the Associate Commissioner? I can't see Beverly, so I don't know. But Beverly, if you have any questions, feel free to open your mic.
No, I don't have any, thank you, Jay.
Okay, thank you.
And if questions come up, sometimes you'll think of them later on, just forward them to me, and if I need to reach out to Dr. Hughes, I can do that. But we're going to be talking about this a lot more, we're bringing it to the Curriculum Committee and then to the COW, and I look forward to being able to show you some of the pathways that we have in place that we're putting together to get us there, to full, you know, full implementation. So.
And we're excited to see that work and also celebrate the process along the way. So, thank you for inviting me here tonight to celebrate and to also, you know, make the connection and share the good work that's going on in Groton.
Thank you very much for taking the time to join us tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
You as well.
Thank you.
And we now come to that portion of our meeting for comments from citizens. This is in regard to agenda items and other subjects of concern that lie within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. The Board welcomes comments from citizens and each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less. Citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comment of citizens' portion of the board meeting. Citizens should make their presentations from the podium where possible. We will then go to anyone who's online and state their names and addresses for the record. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening? Please come forward.
Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Williams. I'm a tutor at Fitch High School. I'm also, I live at 221 Pequot Avenue, Mystic, so I'm also a community member and a taxpayer. I just had a letter that I wanted to read to address the recent cutback in our hours at the high school and also in all tutors in the rest of the district. So my fellow tutors and I are deeply upset regarding the news we received about the drastic cuts to all tutor hours. I have been told this is a temporary situation until June 2024, at which point it will be reconsidered by the board. Our new contract, which was negotiated in good faith, approved by our members and ratified by the Board of Education on December 18, 2023, has been made a moot point with this news. I do understand that the funding has run out for many of these positions, but that was never a surprise and should have been planned for well in advance. This comes with enormous negative impacts to every school in the district. And sadly, the biggest losers will be the students of Groton Public Schools. Many classes are woefully understaffed, resulting in students at risk. The implementation of this new cost-cutting measure will only exacerbate the issue. In closing, this new cutback, even if temporary, feels particularly short-sighted and unfair. It is no secret that Groton Public Schools is top-heavy with administration, but yet cuts affect only the people that work directly with students. And, you know, we're not the lowest-paid staff in the district, but paraeducators are the lowest-paid. And it seems, you know, unfair that... I first started working in Groton Public Schools over 15 years ago, and I started as a para. And at that time, I made about $9 an hour. It was about $50 a day. And I decided to start subbing because they made $90 a day. And I chose to do this because I was a full-time mom for seven years. And then when I went back to work, I wanted to still be available for my children, so the hours worked out. And I found that I loved the job. I love working with kids. I love the flexibility they gave me. And, you know, I didn't have to do lesson plans. I didn't, I just got to work with the kids and enjoy the kids and help kids realize their potential, you know, realize they're good kids, they're not bad kids, you know, they're kids. And so that's how I got into this business. And so we moved forward over 15 years later, and where paras are still only getting $6 more an hour. And, you know, tutors, I know you implemented the use of tutors because they were having a real problem hiring paras to man the classrooms, which is why most of the schools are all understaffed and especially the ABA programs, which are generally your highest priority rooms, and so kids get underserved. Some IPs are not getting met. And this is only going to make it worse. And so I, you know, I would consider trying to pay paras more. I know we just signed a new contract. They are getting a little more, but to me, almost 20 years later and you're only getting $5 or $6 an hour more. You should be paying people a living wage if you want people to work in public schools. You need to get a living wage going for the people who are working in the front lines with the kids. And, you know, we're coming up on teacher shortages because teachers aren't getting paid really a fair rate either for all the certification, all the degrees that a teacher needs to have to work in a classroom, all the rigor that's involved, all the data that you want, all the stress that teachers are under. It's no wonder, you know, nobody wants to get into the business because a lot of people, if you have a science degree, you have a math degree, you can make more money doing something else, you know? But our kids are really important. They're our future. And, you know, if you say you care about kids, you got to start thinking about the staff that works with the kids and start, you know, looking at funding and how can we get the staff that we need to work in Groton Public Schools? Because we still are, despite all this, it's still, you know, a great place to work. I love working here. I love the kids. It's a great community. I know you guys are all trying really hard to keep all the kids happy and keep everything staffed, but I just wanted to let you know that a lot of us are upset by this. And it affects people's lives.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jessica Beckford. I live at 130 Pamela Avenue in Groton, Connecticut. I am a special education tutor in one of the ABA classrooms at Mystic River Elementary School. This is difficult because it's personal, as well as professional, but I'm going to push through it. Like many other Groton Public School admin teachers, paraeducators, and tutors, I was stunned to receive the sudden news about the reduction of tutor hours. That is a loss of 10 hours from each of my paychecks. Aside from this personal setback, I'm very concerned about the impact this will have on our students and the school community as a whole. Tutors play an integral part in the routine of the year arrival and dismissal of all students, for example. Those are times where you need to have eyes on the students. There's a lot of motion, constant moving. Being that we're already understaffed and now facing a reduction of staffing during these critical times, there's going to be safety concerns for our students. And like I said, I am an ABA tutor, so my students need that one-on-one escort. I'm not going to be there. Not going to be there to receive them off the bus, or I'm not going to be there to send them back home. Not going to be there. Am I valuable when I'm there? I hope so. I hope to you we are. But this sudden, without warning, notice, nothing. We were told two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, we were told this. It was a regular training day. We had a regular meeting with the assistant principals. They say tutors hang back. And we were told we had to lose an hour every day. I worked that hour. It's 60 minutes, but I'm present during that hour for each and every one of my students because I have more than one that I care for. Without writing, notification, or anything, we're just told to deal with it, enroll with it because we show up every day for the kids. We're here for the kids. You wouldn't do this, you don't do this job for the paycheck, but I still have to pay bills. I still have student loan debt. Working here has provided an opportunity for me that I needed to, sadly, get by, to actually be paid a living wage. It's hard to find. And my duties are going to be pushed off on others, my paraeducator colleagues, who don't make a lot of money, as you all know, who've done this job. The men and women I work with who've done this job, some of them for nearly two decades. I wish I could say that their stories from over their years working for Groton Public Schools were all positive, but of course, you're not going to find that at any job. But some of the things I hear are just very, they're disheartening. And to now experience this, I understand. I understand their frustrations. I know that if you all had a magic wand and this was a utopia, you'd make it all right, but you need to figure something out, please. And not just for this issue, but down the road. Please do a better job of taking care of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else who would like to address the board? This is for public comment, if you want to address the Board of Education.
Excuse me, Jay. There was a question as to whether there were people waiting to get into the...
Hello.
When we do the ones in person?
No, 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 the people waiting.
Hi.
Hi. My name's Katie J. I live at 19 Depot Road. Sorry I was late. I thought I was at the town hall and walked over there. I have a couple of concerns and it kind of intertwines with what I didn't really know was going on with them, but now I'm brought up to date. Do safety officers that you guys have at the schools, my son is new, he's gone to RMMS for the past few years, but these, the safety officers at the schools, are they affected by this change of lowering hours as well? The red-wearing shirt safety officers, the ones that will show up to a classroom if a student is out of, you know, not acting right and pulls them out of class and escorts them to some room to calm them down if they're unruly and then...
This, actually, this issue is regards to tutors.
Tutors, so it's just the tutors. Okay. Okay, well, I have a couple of concerns about the safety patrolers that are there. Groton Middle School, I noticed that I've asked my son, has somewhere, we've counted between eight and 10 of them that are at this school. These are people that just go to into the classrooms. They remove students from the classroom. This lady over here, she's losing hours for getting a child that needs an assistant to get on a bus or off a bus, where there is a plethora of these red shirts that roam the hallways just to escort a child because they might have talked back to a teacher or the teacher wouldn't let them go to the bathroom, so they just upgot and went on their own and they made a call. Now here comes the security patrol to escort them to the bathroom. There is a lot of them there. And I feel that like there is all these tutors that are losing their hours and time for people that need, they need. Education is essential for these children. And, but you have all these safety patrol people, and then what are they doing with the children? They drop them in the office. And I've seen this firsthand when I had to meet my son in the office for something else, and they just dropped them in the office. How effective is that in guiding them? But they're, they're just everywhere. There's no kind of resource for them to have a area. When I was in high school, there was a program, it was in the school. It limited, we didn't have all these officers, safety officers. We had, if you felt like that or you felt discouraged, you went to this room where you were to calm down. There was one person for that room. Then it was called a STAR program, where you went in that room and so you could, you know, decompress. Talked about it. There was, we would mediate between the student and the teacher, and that was it. It seemed like this school has none of that. There is absolutely none of it. It is the child's removed from the classroom, someone that does not have any thought about this child. They're just like, you did bad, you did wrong, and that's it. And now we're going to dump you and call your mom. And what, how beneficial is that? I mean, this was the first week of October, and the girl's like, I've already been here three times. We're only six weeks into the school year. You've been here three times already and your mom's already been called? Like that's, how effective is that? And then you have, that these people do, but then you have people that we really need and they're losing it. How much money are we spending on these people? Like, what's the salary for these people when you could compose that into a realistic resource of a program that could be and is very well outlined in the state of Rhode Island and is very well documented in being a very progressive and prosperous program for these individuals? You know, it's children these days, you know, you can't, taking away from something is much more effective in children. And this was a program that worked, not just having these, and having these red shirts all over the place, that's an alert on two, on kids. That makes them very on edge. And I have spoken with other educators at the school regarding this in a lot of departments, and they all agree with me on the same thing about this. It's not effective, and it's going to keep happening, and you're wasting a lot of money spending on all these people. We have counted definitely eight. My son was able to give me eight that he knows of, that do, that's it. You're just spending, you're just hemorrhaging money on these people when you could literally condense it into a one-room resourced program to help and it would be much more effective. And I would be guaranteed to put my life on it that it would be. And you would have the money to give this lady back her one hour, two hours, three hours, extra hours if needed, for children that need this and not worrying about all the money going towards these children that are, that, you know, you're coddling, nothing. So that was just my, I think, I thought I'd have more of a presentation I just had. I came in and wanted to ask a couple of questions before I gave a formal presentation and had it written and had my whole, you know, plan and all that done, but I guess I ended up up here anyway, so.
Thank you.
But I, we'll come back to this at a later thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Do we have anybody online, Mark? Has anybody raised any hands online? Because unfortunately, yeah, I'm not seeing the gallery.
We just see Beth is on. I don't know where the gallery is.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure we're not missing anybody. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I wasn't actually going to speak tonight, but here I am. Portia Bordelon, 24 Jefferson Drive, Groton, Connecticut. For full disclosure, I'm a town counselor, Fitch High School graduate, spouse to Ian Thomas as a board member up here. I'll just start with what I came to kind of just taking notes on. You had a wonderful article in the paper about how you guys were trying, well, firstly, I want to thank you for finally, 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 supplying coats to the children who needed them in the Junior ROTC program. One of the programs that was very passionate to me that I brought forward as an initiative to this board, not the same board members that are sitting here, but other boards seven years ago, finally has come to fruition. But unfortunately, they're lacking supplies and officially, they finally, in the middle of winter, have gotten the coats to close out their uniforms. It is so important when we allocate money and approve programs that we fund them to their full capacity or else what is the point? Children should not have to worry about coats for uniforms for a program to be out of code. When speaking of funding, field trips, my son said, Mom, we got invited to a JORTC program, no boss money. As I dug deeper and asked other people in other parts of the schools, again, no funding. We have programs like fencing, which every student has a chance to be a part of a team and play. No one sits the sideline, nobody. Yet, we're underfunded. They call us a club. Guess we're not active enough. Marching Band is a club. Robotics is a club. Well, maybe we should make a priority. We advertise them like we're the greatest school ever, so then fund them like they are. We don't. We have underserved coaches. We do not have female representation on fencing. I haven't seen, I watch every time, never see any posting, once the coach left a year ago. No funding, no, no, no posting, nothing. There's four teams, two JV and two varsity, one male, one female for each side. There's four teams, two JV and two varsity, one male, one female for each side. We show up, we look like the misfits. But yet we have some amazing fencers that come out of that. The man that's running that for program, who works at your school, had knew nothing about fencing and jumped in so the program wouldn't collapse. I've come before this board event before about the collapsing marching band. Was waiting and waiting to get somebody in, they finally hired someone before our marching band season started. Camp was supposed to start. We can do better. The article in the paper, as we heard tonight, I did attend, if you want to know about their speeches, I encourage you to attend the Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship dinners, where they do talk about their speeches. I've been going since I've been in high school. Actually Beverly Washington's daughter was a recipient, one of my dear friends from track and field. The article was disturbing as a minority female that graduated from Fitch, as you guys are saying now, you're trying to help get more kids in the upper level classes. You're just now doing that? That hasn't been a priority all along? I remember at Westside, when we had the three schools where Westside did not have the higher level math classes. When I asked for my son, who's now a senior, I was told there wasn't enough students to take the class. Why? Mrs. Lambert came in and helped initiate, make sure that we had equal access like Cutler. So you want to know where your problem begins, you got to know where it came from. It was improper and unfair allocation of programs across district-wide levels. So here today, I come and I'm hearing tutors are being cut. Who made that decision two weeks ago? Was this board aware? All you board members knew these teachers were being cut? You should have. You're the one making the decision, you're the boss of the superintendent and you don't know that people are being cut? Shame on Groton. That's what I say today, shame on Groton. We can do so much better. To give these folks a two weeks notice and not tell them that they're being cut? That's, that's embarrassing and shameful. Do you want that? We have people up in our ranks and files at central office that are related. We keep hiring more people up there, even people that are related. How is that? The concerns that we have here at Groton, you know, transcend through every generation. There's a lack of minority representation up in those upper levels because you haven't put in the work and you haven't provided the tutors. I was told when my son made the leap, when I came right before some of you, this board, and complained that there was no honors level classes, you gutted the general, called it college prep to make it look nice. And then took away the honors program and you can only go IB or AP. Well, if you have a student who only wants to go no higher than honors, they can't do that. If you have a student that starts level, a general or college prep level and maybe will never be IB or AP, excuse me, IB or AP, there's no room for them to go. That's why you don't have the kids in the higher level classes, because you haven't provided the curriculum props possible for the kids to move within the curriculum appropriately. Then your curriculum committee, is everybody on your curriculum committee have an education background? I know Ian Thomas has a bachelor's in special ed, uh, master's in special educations. Didn't even get on the curriculum committee. Why? Wouldn't you want someone with a special ed background and curriculum writing experience on it? Didn't get appointed. Got to, got to point to something, which is great, because not all boards and districts do that. My concern is, we really need to look at the rule of the problem here. If you're not truly invested in helping minority students get in, it should be, every student should be a goal and a process to get in the upper level class. I don't care of the color of their skin, that should be your priority. Now you're worried about it because you don't see it, because you're cutting the honors level classes and no one wants to go any higher. The reason we don't have it is because we're in an alliance district and we're not funding the proper tutors to support these students like we need. I've had students, I had, I know students that have IPs and five oh fours and they have to overwhelmingly fight to get the allocation of the stuff they need to provide it. I personally asked for a math tutor and told, we can't find one. Here we are cutting tutors, can't find him, I thought. So I'm told one thing and we hear another. We have so much work to do in Groton and it's way beyond the walls of this room right here. Change has to come. The priority of our students must be now, not later. We talk about Dr. Martin Luther King, if we care about his dream, we wouldn't be worried that we're, we shouldn't be looking today in two thousand and twenty-four saying, why is there no minority students in the upper level classes? Why was myself and Beverly Washington's daughter the only two up there at times? This has been going on for years, I've been out almost twenty-five years. This is not a new phenomenon. But when I ask, oh, I get this whole sugar coated explanation of how we don't need the honors level class because they can go right into IB and AP. And Mrs. Bordelon, we will make sure there's tutors in there for your children. There hasn't been one. You don't think an eighteen-year-old student can tell me? You don't think the teacher's going to be honest and say, there is nobody there? They're not there, there's nobody helping. And in fact, we do not have the support, we have one half-day, half, uh, half-part-time, um, uh, career counselor. That's it, helping all the students. The counselors need to get more involved, engaged with the parents to help pick the classes. I'm an involved parent, not every parent is. How you break the cycle is that you actually put an emphasis on making sure where in the tracks are these kids going? And you need to provide the proper tracks for the students, which are not being given. Honors level classes, I don't, I'll wrap it up. Honors level classes need to be re-implemented. When I called our neighboring schools like NFA and higher performing schools, honors level, honors level classes overwhelmingly were present. Overwhelmingly. Why are we cutting? When I asked them the teachers, they have said to me, they don't know why it's not there, there are students that are in the IB and the AP that shouldn't be and should have that honors level classes. We're, we should be ashamed of ourselves. We should be ashamed that workers that work for our town have to come to this podium and speak. As a person who supported the raises for PERS, I looked at your budget. I'm hoping that budget has PERS initiatives in there and raises that are going to fit cost of living. But we have to do better. We cannot give people a two weeks notice fairly and cut them out of hours of work that you promised at the beginning of the year. Who implemented that? Who, who went forth with it and whose idea was that? And I think we need to answer that immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Anybody online, Mark? Okay, all right, thank you very much. Uh, next we have, uh, response to comments from citizens. Does anyone have any response?
Thank you, Jay. I'd like to get some answers from Susan about the questions that Portia Bordelon has brought up. Because I'm very interested in the tutors. This is the first I'm hearing about it and I don't want to discuss it, but I'd like to get some answers from the administration.
Um, Ms. Chair, I, I echo that sentiment as well. I hear the concerns tonight. This is also the first time, I, although over the past few days, I've received a number of emails. And I'm very concerned. I'd like to hear the answer to the question too, as to how this came to be.
Yeah, I can definitely say the board did not make this decision and so, um, this will definitely be an issue that we need to discuss at a future meeting. Any other comments?
I just want to say I am totally shocked.
Could, could I make a motion to amend the agenda to add in some discussion on, so we can understand this better?
We, we can't add to, um, this section. We can add an agenda item with two-thirds of the board agreeing to it.
Can I make a motion to add an agenda item to discuss, um, the tutors?
Second.
Second, Thomas?
Second.
All in favor?
Three seconds.
So I guess at this point we will, um, add that item under new business. Do we have student representatives this evening?
No, they were here, Ms. Martin Luther King scholars though.
My, my daughter's undergoing fire training, so.
Okay. All right, and, um, so next would be superintendent and administrative reports.
All right. So I'm going to follow up with legislation. Um, I did give the board a lot of information about legislation that kind of came to us in two thousand and twenty-three. New things that are coming up in legislation for this year in two thousand and twenty-four. And I'm going to ask, um, Dr. Kennedy if he can put up the little slideshow. So I have really had, um, a chance to meet with legislators, um, to meet with superintendents around legislation. We actually have a policy committee that deals with all the new legislation and much of this comes to us with a price tag, with their unfunded mandates. Most of the legislation has really good purpose and we understand why it's being put into place. But it often comes without support to districts, so we have to figure out how to pay for it. So, um, once I see it up, one of the, um, opportunities that principal, that superintendents had was to have, um, a discussion around educational legislation and an update from Shipman, which is a legal firm that works with Connecticut Association of School Superintendents. And, um, I know that all new board members are aware of this because that was one of the first legislations that you were made aware of, that you needed to have, um, a required training and orientation. And so we is, you know, when the new board members came, um, were elected, we made sure that they knew that we had a CAPS-CAP convention right here at the Marriott and they were all invited and, um, you know, attended different sessions for that. And then there was also, um, in our first meeting, we had invited Mary, Dr. Mary Broderick, who is, um, was a longtime superintendent in East Line. And she really did kind of an orientation at that board meeting for new board members. We also, Jay and I, or we met with new board members when they came in. We had like a sit-down and kind of a small group or one-to-one, um, conversation and really tried to provide you with a lot of beginning information. And, you know, and learning to be a board member will take time. We've had board members who've been in this work, I think Rita was here for twenty years. And so, um, there is a, a lot of legacy in all of that, but it's something that will be continuous. And we do offer training along the way. The CAP, CAPS Conference happens annually. I think some of you even took a full day somewhere, I don't know if it was on Zoom or in person. So our new board members are very much aware of this new legislation. So thank you. And we'll move it along.
Question?
Yep.
Are you going to go through this?
I'm going to go through the whole thing, yep. No, just, just some of the slides that were highlights, that are things that we're paying attention to. There's so many pieces of legislation, I was reviewing it over the weekend and it's just enormous. So I'm talking about the things that we have been faced with and how we're kind of dealing with it. And then the required program of instruction, you heard the associate commissioner talk about the right to read legislation and, and what's happening, um, across our state with reading and, um, with K three. And I'm hearing really good things about the work that's been, um, you know, being implemented in phonemic awareness and phonics, teachers are very excited about it. The new implemented materials that are, um, you know, are authorized by the state have been well accepted and they're seeing really good, um, results with our students. There are other things coming along like civics and media literacy. You'll see soon a financial literacy piece. So when those are added to, um, legislation and then they become something we have to look at in policy when it comes to graduation requirements. So just know that that could happen. And then it could be additional FTEs and staffing. It could be additional courses that kids are, you know, would have to take. So the next one happens to be the financial literacy. So I think if we can move that along. And I guess it's called personal financial management, which we do have those courses at the high school, but they're kind of, um, as an elective for students who opt in. And this is going to be a requirement that all kids will have to have, uh, half a year, like they have in civics. And civics might be bumped up to a full year. So those are the kinds of pieces that are coming our way that we have to pay attention to and can be ahead of the deadline. Another one that's very interesting, and I've briefed the board on this, is, um, rising the kindergarten age to five when they start school. We are the only state, we are the only state in the union that had four-year-olds coming to school for a very long time when others had really rolled this age up. One of the things that we found as a community, and it really came from my preschool, pre-K and kindergarten teachers saying, you know, with some of these children, especially the ones who don't turn five until sometimes December, January one. So all those children that are really still four-year-olds when they come to school and don't turn five until that fall. We really designed a transitional kindergarten program, which was a district program and it was very successful. As a matter of fact, teachers would say, I think we could use more of these than just one districted program. But students had opportunities, if they weren't really ready for kindergarten, for preschool, pre-K or this TK program. And some went to kindergarten and there were some times when children had to repeat kindergarten because of their age and they just, it's a development thing that they just needed more time. So with that, I brought that, this to the board's attention, we're getting ready for kindergarten night, um, this week. And, um, we've invited anyone who is turning five in two thousand and twenty-four to come. We're going to talk a little bit about this legislation. We're going to talk about the options that Groton has in place for students, um, you know, who are in this. And there is a waiver process, so you might have a few students who are early fall, who are ready for kindergarten. And through the screening process, which will screen all children like we always do, we'll be able to see who's ready for kindergarten, who might be ready, who's eligible for TK and then who might need another year in pre-K. So, um, that work is being done and is following the legislation guidelines. There's another interesting thing that I know Beth Horler was excited to see because she is in the Play and Ingenuity School at Mystic River Magnet. And, um, this is one where our teachers have really recognized this and said, we need to really consider for early childhood that play is so important, this is how learning takes place. So to have legislation around play-based learning during the preschool, kindergarten and even elementary years is important. And I think with having inter-district magnet schools, our children do get an opportunity through their enrichment periods to find things that they're really curious about and want to discover and really have that opportunity. And, and things that teachers really want to be able to explore with kids to have those, um, enrichment periods during the school day. And I think there are a lot of ways in our curriculum that we're also, whether it's through the math games, through other ways of play, breeder's theater, that we really make it a playful, joyful experience. But this legislation calls to mind that we have to keep this into consideration. So it'll be interesting to see what the regulations are on some of these things as well. I know that Denise Doolittle talked to you a little bit about the age of special education eligibility. And, um, you know, it was twenty-one at first and now it's twenty-two, but until the end of the school year when they turn twenty-two. So we do have our Transition Academy housed at central office. It's a wonderful program. Our kids are really fully part of, um, our everyday in that building. And they bring us so much, um, joy and I love stopping in and seeing what they're working on. But that is now legislation, so that then, you know, makes our population larger and we're committed to educating them for a longer period of time. Professional development and the PDEC membership. So, um, we really are, um, interested in what the PERS and the tutors want for professional development. Before COVID, they would attend, um, our meetings with the GTLC, which is Groton Teaching Learning Collaborative. We want to have a couple of members back at that table so that they can help to plan for the professional learning. It's really important, they, we do survey and we try to elicit what kinds of information they're interested in. Some of it is also in the way of safety, security, um, ways to de-escalate behavior, things that they would need anyway and they've asked for. So we've tried to provide that. And then how much time? So TLI days, our PERS do not go home, they stay with us and they do, um, professional learning. And I think the one day in, um, in, um, November, they're there with us all day. And then a day before school starts. So this really mandates an amount of time that we also provide for professional learning. So there was talk around mental health in legislation, um, suicide prevention. We just worked on a policy that involves suicide prevention and making sure that we had the phone number listed and, and what you do if you have, um, you know, concerns. And one of the things that we have been really practicing, um, for the past ten years is something called restorative practice, where if there is an issue in the classroom and the, um, a child feels like they've been, um, you know, wronged by another student, by another adult, or, you know, if anyone that. by another adult, or, you know, if anyone, that one of the practices is to really be able to bring people together and to be able to talk it out and to work problems out and to really restore a relationship that's been broken. So, um, we've had assistance with that. And training, teachers have been trained, administrators have been trained in how that all works, to be able to do it in the, to be able to provide that service in the classroom or in the office. Um, and then the whole concern about opioids and, um, expanding access to, you know, the necessary Narcan. It's in all of our schools, even in the elementaries. You know, this could affect a child, a student, you know, the, the concerns we've heard about fentanyl and how it, you could get traces of it. It could, you know, it's really powerful. It's very scary and I think we just have to be really able to have training in that and also, um, you know, the resources and the, um, you know, the Narcan in our buildings for that. Teacher performance evaluation, Dr. Phil Piazza has been really on top of that. We've had Dr., we've had Kim Marshall, who's been able to work with our administrators. So getting to more walkthroughs and getting into the classroom more is really the goal of all the principals and giving teachers quality feedback. But that's something also Groton Teaching and Learning Collaborative is in charge of PV and also the, the evaluation system. We're developing our own evaluation. Beth Horler is here. She kind of co-chairs that with Dr. Piazza and, um, you know, they're really making some wonderful progress on that. And we're really implementing parts of it this year. We're, and getting feedback on how that's working. Another important initiative, um, for boards, school boards, is increasing educator diversity plans. And I know that Lori Lapine has been here to present ways that we're doing that. Our teacher in residence is a high-quality program where we've actually brought in, um, probably six, um, teachers in residence, um, that have really gotten jobs in the elementary because they've started it at the state level in the elementary. They're going to be expanding it for special education. So I know we're going to look for opportunities in special ed to also bring in teachers in residence. I think growing our own and tapping some of our own employees who are working with us, who want a teaching degree. We actually support them in their college experience, um, if they want to be able to teach eventually in Groton Public Schools. And I would say, starting with our, um, you know, Fitch High School students in the program called Ed Rising, where we have maybe budding, um, teachers who would like to be able to teach and then, you know, go off to college and come back to Groton Public Schools and teach is a really viable way to expand our educator diversity. And then the last one is something that is, um, really more of a facilities, but we learned through COVID that air quality and HVAC was probably the most important thing in keeping people safe and healthy. We did a lot of cleaning. We did a lot of masking. We did a lot of other things, but that indoor air quality is really high on our list. I know Sam Kilpatrick is very invested in that and has some programs happening. Um, and we've had CIPs related to this. And so now we're really having to monitor and he's very aware of that there's going to be annual inspections, um, in every building and we're going to be using the, um, toolkit for schools, tools for schools, which is a program that we've known for a long time, but it's been updated around this. So those were some of the highlights that I thought really, um, although there are many more, and I'm not giving you all of them, but these were some I really wanted to bring to your attention. And I appreciate the board, you know, taking some of these documents, looking through. And if there's ever an opportunity that we can bring legislators here and have a conversation with them about some of these things, because they'll be boots on the ground in Hartford in the next month or so, um, doing this work. So I want to make sure that, um, you know, our voice is heard. So, thank you.
Next, we have, uh, Director of Finance.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question. Were we able to get a copy of that slideshow?
Sure. Yeah. I just really pulled those together because I was going to talk about them, but I thought it would be easier to have a vigil for you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Let me just pull this a little closer. Good evening. Um, I thought I'd just take you through the object code report first. So we've expended and/or encumbered about $71 million, leaving us with about 10 and a half or so, or 12.9% of our budget for the remainder of the year. If you recall, um, I've been talking about how much we've been encumbering. So known costs we've tried to encumber into our P and L, which is a little different than last year. Compared to last month, we spent about $2.8 million this month, $600,000 on salaries, another $900,000 just on our health insurance. And we'll talk about that a little bit in the dashboard in a second here. Um, about $480,000 between special education tuition and assessments and another $300,000 on utilities. So, um, if you looked at last year and compared, just because I wanted to get a comparison, at this time we had about $14 million of our budget left. But as I mentioned, we did not encumber some of the larger expenses. So for instance, uh, we did not encumber our bus contract last year at this point. We did not encumber a lot of our salaries last year at this point. And last year we paid a little bit more. We were a little faster in paying some of our healthcare claims. While we're talking about healthcare, if you don't mind, I'm just going to flip over to the health insurance dashboard. So this is one we keep updated. Um, it's sort of a management tool for myself. If there is good news this year, this month, our claims are about $850,000, which is pretty much in line with what we've seen over the last two years. Um, and if you look back the last couple of months, it's been a little bit of a heartthrob, right? We've had a good month. We've had some challenging months and it goes back and forth, but, um, good month for us this month in, in retrospect. Um, we're still about 30, 31% over last year. And our daily claims, again, I keep mentioning this because I want to make sure we're, we're sort of tracking here. So our daily claims, like a primary care physicians, those, those type of claims are are pretty much on par with what they were last year. I mean, within a point or two. It's all those mid-tiered claims that are really the ones that are challenging for us this year. Um, and then if you look at the bottom, just our annual healthcare costs, you know, just if you look at last year, it's called about 11.7 million and we're, we're at 5 million already. This is through November. So I would fully exceed, not fully expect we're going to hit something close to that 11 million. If you go over to the energy dashboard.
Can you guys put this up so we can follow? You don't have it?
It's not projected.
I think Joyce sent all the documents to you.
Should all be in attachment.
What's that?
Should be in attachment.
Is there any way to project that up on the screen that people are watching?
Yeah, Mark has the ability to put it up.
May I ask a question while you're doing that? Dave, um, could you give an idea of the, I'm looking at FY '23 because that's the last year, which we had figures for annual healthcare insurance costs. Uh, I understood that the 11.6 million in total healthcare cost was made up of, uh, the portion paid by the beneficiaries and a portion paid by the school district. Is that correct?
Well, these are claims incurred. So you're talking about sort of premiums that we would pay, yeah.
Well, I guess I'm trying to find out, um, how much in percentage, if, if it's possible to know, of that 11.67 million was borne by the school district budget and how much of that was borne by the beneficiaries?
Okay, I can get you that. I, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head for the historical, but I could certainly get you that.
Thank you.
I know what you're asking now.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Kennedy, do you think you can help at all with that? Okay, good. Thank you. So we're going to put up the health insurance dashboard first. Okay, we go further than that. It's a, a health dashboard.
Should be the next item.
Next, should be the next item.
Number three.
There it is. Is that it? You might need to make that one a little larger. Thank you.
Let me, let me just summarize one more time for you. So I didn't touch base really on the enrollment. The enrollment has been pretty consistent. We've been down, you know, anywhere from three to 5%. Um, my last comment was really over to the right-hand column there, the monthly claim cost where the box is, which shows our claim cost of about 850,000, sort of that dark gray line there, which has been pretty consistent over the last few years, which is sort of good news for, for us if you look back at some of the other months and what that trend has looked like. And then I also mentioned on the bottom left-hand corner, just our, the claim size, which has been interesting and how the, you know, if you look at the first line, you know, the claims between 50 and 200,000 is really where we're starting to see the trend versus the, the claims that are really under 50,000, the smaller ones, is where we've had almost similar results as last year, if not a little more favorable. And then Matthew asked me a question on the bottom right-hand corner, just to split out the fiscal year '23 cost between the amount the board paid versus the employee contributions, which I can provide for.
And I know we're working closely with the town also when it comes to health insurance and also with our provider. And I think you have a meeting coming up on the 25th that should give us more insight as well.
Yeah, so our renewal meeting's the 25th, the afternoon of the 25th, so that'll give us some helpful insights, not only into this year, but also our budget for.
And if we have something to add to board notes, maybe we can do that if there's enough information.
Lori and I will both be attending.
All right. Thank you.
One, one more question about that, if you may. We have two costs. One, we, as I understand it, one is the actual medical costs and the other is the management costs from the insurance company. Do we know if they're going to lower their price, keep the price steady, or raise the price? And when would, when might we know that?
I'll let you know on Thursday.
We don't know yet. On the 25th?
Oh, on the 25th.
Maybe perhaps. Hopefully.
One more question on that subject. Is this meeting having to do with like looking forward as far as like, um, remaining partnered with the town or not?
Well, it will give us insight.
Thursday is just the renewal pricing for our existing program.
Yeah.
Moving forward, I would like to get some sense, maybe too late in the game now for this year's budget.
It is too late for this year, but in the future.
But moving, looking forward, a way to just look at the three options, uh, as far as like remaining with the current provider, um, or, uh, decoupling from the town and seeking, maybe partnering up with the state program or working with the town and then going up and, uh, getting on the state program. Just to have the, those three basic options in front of us would be incredibly beneficial. Um, to see what the cost differentials would be, uh, both just for us and also what it would do for the employees deductibles. Thank you.
And I know that Lori has done that, um, analysis in the past.
She has.
Because it also, um, works with the unions.
Right. You have to work with the unions.
Each of the unions would have to renegotiate that and the, the town would have to agree to that decoupling. But if Lori could provide some of the data from the previous years, just so that we have an idea, um, you know, because it has been studied.
And it wasn't our advantage back then, but I know that she's reached out to get more future information to see, you know, if, if there may be a chance that it would be a, a better service. So we definitely want to investigate that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Now, is this the energy?
Sophie, can, not yet. If we can pull up, um.
The energy is the next one?
Attachment number four. Um, I'll start over on the left on, on electricity, sort of that left column there. So we've spent, you know, call it 690,000 or so, so far in our fiscal year. Um, our usage, again, knock on wood, has been very good the last couple of months as compared to previous years. And if you look at it over the course of the fiscal year to date, um, I think we're within 1% of last year, which leads me to believe that, um, you know, our full year cost will be something very similar to last year. It's been very predictable the last few months. In the middle, the natural gas cost, um, you know, it's, it's a hard one to comment on thus far. I mean, you've, you've got the numbers there, but you can tell the majority of our costs are similar to oil. We're really going to see over the next, call it 60, 90 days, you know, January, February, March, as we get through the wintertime here. No bad news here. It's been, it's actually been trending okay, but it's, um, it's almost too early to tell. And then oil, all the way over to the right-hand column, again, we haven't spent that much thus far. But again, similar to natural gas, you can see the, what January, February, March looked like for us. So, you know, let's hope for another good winter. Last couple of weeks have been a little bit tough, but they, these will start to develop over the next couple of months and give us some better insights.
Jay? Yes, I could. Would it be useful, would it be useful on the bottom boxes when you look at electricity by school, gas by school, oil by school, to, because we know they're different building sizes? Would it be useful to use the building footprint, the, the square footage of the building as a sort of a denominator, if you will?
Utilization by square footage or something?
Yeah. So I mean, would that, if you were to do that, would we, would that give us a, a good sense of the efficiency of each of the buildings?
Yeah, it would normalize it for sure, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me take a look.
I don't know if there's another way to do that. I just thought of square footage off the top of my head as, you know, one way to compare apples to apples.
I can take a look at that for sure.
Thanks.
Any other questions about the energy dashboard?
Jay, I have a question.
Yes, Beverly.
If, uh, is Northeast Academy smaller than Captain Kanaski?
By about four classrooms.
Why is the oil usage so high at Northeast Academy compared to, um, the other schools, especially Captain Kanaski? Cause they were built at, they were built at the same time, so.
What's the time frame? Is this fiscal year? It's for the fiscal year? Yeah. I can't answer that fully, um, because we are, uh, we are, uh, running active dehumidification in both of those buildings in order to mitigate the humidity problem. So we'll have to look into that a little more closely and see if we can figure that out. But we're doing the same process in both buildings. So, um, it doesn't seem like four, eight classrooms would make that much of a difference, but we'll, we'll take a look into it and see what we can get for an answer.
If I could ask on that note, um, the, uh, active dehumidification efforts, uh, could you describe what's, what's
could you describe what's, what's happening there?
What active dehumidification is?
Yes.
Yeah, wh- when we're running the air conditioning in that weather, we actually have to run the boilers to dry it out because the units that are on the roof do not actually do that. You could get a more modern piece of equipment up there and, and do it with that unit on the roof, but the ones that are installed in those two buildings do not have that ability.
So, we're running heat and AC at the same time?
Yes. Not necessarily equally, but.
And what do we take to remedy that situation?
At a CIP. It's in the CIP.
It's in the CIP. This year's CIP?
It's been in for like four or five years.
And it's been cut?
Yeah.
It's been pushed out, not cut.
Pushed out by the town?
Pushed out another year.
Who made that decision?
Uh, well, uh.
It runs the town.
It, it goes to three different groups before, after it comes to us. I'm not really positive whether it was the planning commission, the town manager, or maybe the town. I don't think it went to the town council. It didn't get to the town council.
It did not get to the town council?
It did not.
Okay. Um, is there a way we can isolate where?
So, it's really a system. It really is a million-dollar project. So, what we've been doing is putting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Northeast, but we would probably need to do it for both CK and Northeast. And I think, how many units are on top of those buildings? Eight?
Eight to ten, depending.
So, half a million dollars times eight is the project in its entirety. And those buildings are only fifteen years old, remember? So, but the equipment that, that was designed to go on top did not do what they needed to do fully. So, we've had to remedy. And, and we have had expertise. We've had experts come in the building to help us with this. We didn't just make this up so that we could make sure the buildings were healthy and safe. But it, that's a short-term fix. It's not a long term, and we've known. And so, it definitely is something that needs to happen.
So, just take me through that. You said eight parts, a million. What was the numbers you just gave?
So, it's two hundred and fifty per unit times eight. And in two schools, it'd be half a million, you know, times the eight.
Okay.
I think the two fifty was, if I may, that was in like two thousand seventeen dollars, so.
Yeah.
Understood.
Adrian?
Yeah, two questions. Have we looked into what that, what we're paying in an escalated cost to run both of those systems at the same time? So, how much money are we spending every year to run an inefficient system? And I'm just kind of wondering what the long-term payoff is. I mean, are we spending this amount of money in five years that it would cost just to replace the equipment? Or ten years, or two years? And then secondly, have, I assume this has happened, but have we just looked into adding dehumidification to our existing system?
Fussin O'Neill did the study for us, and these units are recommended to be changed out after twenty years. And we're at the fifteen, sixteen-year mark now, so. And their recommendation was to change, change the units out.
All right. All right, so is that, can we make some kind of estimate on the financial cost to do what we're doing? Because I think we're doing this in Fitch as well, right?
No.
Didn't we have, didn't we have some issues in like the, that were in the fall? Or maybe it was last spring when we had to run heat and?
Not Fitch High School.
All right.
Oh, one more question. In regards to the, the solar panels on the middle school, I'm not seeing this reflected in the energy dashboard.
I think, I think Sam is getting ready to tell you all about that and when we might start to see some of that efficiency.
Okay.
So, in his report, we actually talked that he's going to share some of that information tonight. So, it just preempts him.
I just had one question.
Sure.
You had mentioned that it's been pushed since two thousand and seventeen? Is that a fair? So, we've, like, the heat, running the heat, so running the heat and the air conditioning, has it been since two thousand and seventeen?
I, I'd have to look at the exact date, but it's been a few years for sure, yes.
Okay.
We do have record of when we first put the CIP in, so we can find out, Jay.
Yeah, because if it is two thousand and seventeen and it's only been fifteen years, that means like it started failing when it was pretty much brand-new.
Well, at least ten, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
If I might, I, I don't think it's the units themselves that are the problem. The problem is, as I understand it, is that there was a much higher than expected level of humidity in the buildings. I mean, it works out to the same problem, but the units were, again, this is just my understanding, were designed for a building that didn't turn out to be the building they, they thought.
That's correct.
Isn't that the problem that we had, at least from Northeast Academy? It's a higher level of, right? So, the units aren't failing. They're just not doing a job they were never hired to do, so to speak.
So, is it because we bought less units than we were supposed to have?
No, the building just had higher humidity than was expected.
Northeast is actually built on wetlands. I mean.
Should have been expected.
Right. Northe- I mean, Captain Kolnowski doesn't have the same issue, but it, it does get moist over there, too. And I don't know if it's the ledge. I don't know really what that's all about, but.
Yeah.
Okay. So, are we ready for Sam?
Yeah, good evening. A report on four items. So, I guess while we're talking about humidity, I might as well update you on the Fitch High School water issue. Again, we had a, just before the holiday, we had a very heavy rainstorm and we had some minor flooding down at the lower level of the new section of the building again. Previously, when we had it the last time, we snuck our cameras down the drain lines, try and find out whether there are any leaks, cracks in the pipes, those sorts of things. Couldn't find anything. But after this last issue, we decided to actually open up a concrete chase. It's a concrete block chase that this leader pipe comes down through the building and then goes under the slab outside the building. So, we actually opened, cut, cut the block out and found that at the bottom of this line there is a, a, a Y in the, in the pipe. And normally, in a Y, the pipe is coming down and then it has a little offshoot to it, if I can explain it to you. And usually on that little offshoot, there's a threaded cap or something in there, but these are cast iron pipes, so they had a, a Fernco, a rubber cap on it. So, after, well, I'm not sure exactly when that cap failed and came off because I'm told by the teacher in the room next door and also confirmed by some of the maintenance staff that have been around for many years that they had a similar problem about two years after the building opened. And we haven't had that problem since until this past, past fall. So, once we opened it up, we found the Y. The cap wasn't on there. We've now replaced the cap. Don't know when it came off, why it failed. It's older. It's fourteen, fifteen years old. Don't know if it was tightened enough, whether it was too much pressure coming down there because there are, in this eight-inch pipe, there are also four other drains that lead in, four eight-inch lines that come into this one eight-inch line coming down. So, it's a, it's, it's a question of whether there's too much water coming down there and, and creating a major pressure problem at the lower level. So, at any rate, we've replaced the cap. Our technicians tightened it down to specifications and we put an access panel in that wall so that we can get in there and inspect it and keep an eye on it. And so, that's a Fitch High School problem. We were fortunate that Belle Four was able to get there quickly and we had the, the Monday off for MLK Junior. And so, we were able to get that, those six classrooms that were involved completely dried out and ready for classes to resume on Tuesday when the kids came back from the break. And now, our staff, our in-house staff is actually, well, we did the sheet rocking that we needed to do in-house rather than having the contractor do it again. And we finished the painting today and we are installing the cove base, which is the rubber baseboard that goes around at the bottom of sheet rock in a, in a commercial building. So, we're doing all of that in-house as opposed to having a contractor do it to finish that up. I did speak to Principal Brown and he was amenable to us taking a week or two to get that done. Doesn't have any effect on the classroom. It just doesn't look very nice without the cove base on there. So, we're working on that presently. We should have that. I, I think we might be done sooner than that. The second item is the solar at Groton Middle School in Mystic River. And those projects are complete. The contractors have cleaned up. And we are just waiting for Eversource to come out and do their final inspection before the system is turned on and activated. You may have driven by the high school or come on up Fort Hill and you may have seen that the light poles are up for the Groton Middle School field or fields. There are lights on both the softball field and the artificial field, multipurpose artificial field on the other end. And in the plan, we have also got, I think, three poles that were going to be on the walkway outside the grass field leading from the softball, softball field back toward the artificial field so that at nighttime, when kids are walking back, that, that path is lighted. The light stanchions themselves are probably thirty-five, forty feet in the air. These poles are about twenty-five feet in the air. So, we're now at the stage where the FAA is now saying that we have to have beacons on those shorter poles as well. I know that our architect had just sent a message back to them today explaining that the trees that are adjacent to that space are about thirty feet taller than the light poles. Was asking for some relief on that, but the FAA was not agreeable to that at this point. So, it looks like we're still going to have to do this. So, we're in a state of flux at this point, just waiting for the FAA to make a decision or, or for us to get the planners to determine how exactly we're going to get those beacons on those poles that are already risen. So. And then the, the last item I had was that it's, it's only January. We haven't had a lot of snow, so there hasn't been a lot of snow, snow plowing right now. That doesn't look too bad, but we've got a long way to go till we get till March fifteenth when I start to feel comfortable. We did shovel two feet of snow off our baseball field on March sixteenth one year. So, I just want to get to the fifteenth anyways where I can feel comfortable. But we, we have, our guys have been out there mornings to, to salt because the, the driveways and, and parking lots are slippery with some frost and/or ice, black ice. So, lots of salt usage and we expect that to continue even though I think we might hit fifty before the week's out. But something else is going to turn around and come back and get us.
Quick question on the Fitch High School flooding situation. Did you say that there were three eight-inch pipes converging into one eight-inch pipe?
That's what we determined, yeah. The, the, three drains on the roof lead into that one leader pipe coming down there. Same size.
And from that, that leader pipe, the single pipe, that's a discharge pipe?
That's the leader that comes down and then it goes under the slab to the outside, to the, oh, outside the lower level, across the parking lot. To the catch basin.
Is there any opportunity possibly to replace that eight-inch pipe with something a little wider?
Well, I, I, I've got, I'm in contact with, well, first of all, I want to, I want to have the contractor come with a, a better camera system and take a look under the slab at the, at the pipe that's under the slab and make sure that we're clear there and also determine the exact size all the way through there. And then I think we're going to have to go back to an architect to determine how you would fix that. And because it would not be, it wouldn't be an easy job without, it would have to be done outside of school hours, for sure.
Understood. So, yeah, I guess we're trying to picture it's, it's an internal? The pipe's internal to the structure or?
Yeah, yeah. Most, most of the drain lines in the schools are within the walls.
But this is all to catch stormwater, correct? This is to catch stormwater?
Yes.
All right. So, the, the gutters for the school actually run inside the school itself?
Yep.
Okay.
And Beverly, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you, Jerry. Um, Sam, you said that this is, has to do with the solar panels at that Groton Middle School. You said you're waiting for Eversource to come before the system could be activated. And what exactly does Eversource have to do?
They need to make, do their final inspection and grant them permission to activate it.
Do you have, do you have an idea when they're coming?
I don't. I, I haven't seen a date yet. I know they asked, they asked for a date, but I haven't seen the date yet.
Anyone else have any questions for Sam? Okay, if not, we will move on to committee reports. We'll start with policy.
Policy committee met and we will be addressing some of the recommendations approved.
Very good. And curriculum, I believe, meets next week?
I'm sorry?
I believe curriculum meets next week.
Yes, curriculum does meet, meet next week. But I, I, I think I saw on the, the board notes that it, it's not, it doesn't appear on that calendar, on the board notes.
Right, I think those were printed before that was posted.
Oh, I see, I see.
So, but we'll definitely get that up to date.
So, this, Dr. Kiatza and I will get together and create the, the agenda.
So, just, what's the time and date on that?
I'm sorry?
What is the time and date for that meeting?
It's five o'clock, pardon me, on Monday, the twenty-ninth. That's coming, this Monday coming up.
Thank you.
And, and we don't know yet. We're deciding when that committee will meet. This is our, our initial meeting where we're going to decide what the agendas will look like and, pardon me, what, what date we're going to meet and what time.
Thank you very much.
And finance and facilities.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We met tonight ahead of this meeting and we've had a review from our business manager and also our Director of Buildings and Grounds. We covered a lot of what was mentioned tonight. We got a review of historical revenue supporting our budget as opposed to what we expect is going to come in. Got a review of our estimated forecast where we're going to wind up with our current budget, twenty-three, twenty-four budget. We got a health reserve update, a review once more of unanticipated property costs, various things that have happened, various buildings, and the very same grounds report, building and grounds report the board has received tonight.
Any questions on that? If not, so Beverly is our representative to learn. Did you have a report from your last meeting, Beverly? Beverly, you just need to unmute.
Sorry about that. Um, I have a short report. The Executive Director, Kate Erickson, she presented a new board member orientation. Um, she said, "Learn." She said Learn is one of the six regional education service centers referred to as RESC. Connecticut General Statute ten sixty-six, established regional education service centers in nineteen sixty-six. Learn covers twenty-five towns, twenty-foot districts, and twenty-one superintendings. Learn has purchased sixteen acres of water grid for a pre-K program. And come September twenty twenty-four, Learn will offer a virtual regional course. That means our students can participate in that virtual regional course. They didn't say what the course is gonna be yet, but it's gonna be virtual and it's gonna be something else the whole region can participate in, students anyway. Learn special ed tuition ranges from seventy-eight thousand to a hundred and eight thousand plus course for other services provided such as PTO Ts, speech, speech therapy. And other than that, we approved salaries and benefits for teachers and administrators. It was a great meeting, lots of energy, and I enjoyed going to the first meeting. Thank you, Jay, for appointing me.
Thank you, Beverly. Anyone have any questions about Learn? Let's see, Groton Scholarship met last Thursday. There was a conflict, so we were not able to attend, but we are waiting on minutes from that. Trails, has that met? Matthew?
No, they, no, they, we only meet quarterly.
Okay, all right. Did you have a report from the library?
I have a double report.
Okay.
Both of them, I think, make you very happy. I had spoken earlier with Susan about something that the library, a collaboration with the li, potential collaboration with the library. As you know from previously, Ernie got several grants so that we're able to process fresh food and freeze it and use it for our kids. And separately, the library has provided seeds for people who want to grow vegetables. So I asked Ernie what he thought about the idea of some kind of collaboration to have victory gardens where somebody who had a garden might dedicate a space, maybe fifty, a hundred square feet, to grow a particular kind of herb or sweet potatoes, one thing, not just a lot of little things from one place. And he kicked it around with his staff and he said they were very excited about it. So at the library meeting, this past meeting, they formally said they would love to dance with us and I hope to chat with Ernie and pass the baton to him and Jennifer at the library so they can have a go at that. The second thing is the library met at the same meeting last week, talking about Juneteenth. And we talked about possible collaborations with NAACP and also possibly with the school district. So I have chatted briefly with Counselor Parker, who is the Secretary of the NAACP. And I haven't had a chance yet because it was just recently, but chat with Susan as to how she might want to proceed with implementing some kind of collaboration with the library.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just curious to know, the, I know we spoke a little bit about the Athletic Fields Task Force and I had expressed interest in being assigned to that.
Right.
Is that official?
Yes, however, I have not seen any posting that they're meeting.
Okay, I'll reach out to some people and see if I can prompt some action.
Yeah, definitely, if they meet, you are it.
All right. And also the Permanent School Building Committee, has anyone been assigned to that?
Dean was appointed to that nominally, yes. But has, has that met?
I don't think that has met since the buildings were built, yeah.
Yeah, that, that sort of comes into activation when there's a, a large building project underway, so.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I think, just shooting from the hip, I would just say like, you know, maybe that might be a committee we want to think about maybe convening more frequently and thinking more long-term, periodic.
Yeah, that definitely would be something to, to reach out to their chair about. That is a town.
Who is the chair?
Body. Is it still Mr. Austin LaFrance?
It is.
Okay. Yeah, so he, he, he would call the meeting.
I'll reach out to him as well. And the current Chair of Athletic Fields is, is who again?
I don't recall his name offhand, but I'll look it up and send it to you. They have not met officially in, I would say, over a year. Their last attempt failed for lack of a quorum.
Okay. Thank you.
Did it used to be the Parks and Rec Director and then it switched when he left? I mean, I think probably the town manager would be able to.
All right, I'll reach out.
I can go back through the minutes and, the next item is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine, will be enacted by one motion. Points of clarification will be allowed and so I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Matthew? And all in favor? We'd like to thank the Colombian Charities of Connecticut, which has donated five hundred dollars to be used by the Transition Academy, and the Groton Elks Lodge twenty-one sixty-three, which has donated five hundred dollars to be used by the Treehouse Program for toys, field trips, and art supplies. We'll now move on to old business.
Excuse me, Jay.
Yes.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Dean did.
Dean.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, John. And so under old business, let's see, Rob, would you like to read the motion?
To approve policy P fifty-one seventeen, elementary K through five, school placement as a second reading.
And do I have a second?
Second, Thomas.
And discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Reviewing the notes from the meeting last month, we were supposed to receive a link to the attendance zone maps.
Is it right on the website? I see Loring Cassini here. I think it's right on our website somewhere, but I can send it to you.
It was on the website. I believe Joyce also sent it, but I'm, I'm not sure if that makes sense. Do I copy that review? I'm not positive.
Okay.
And it also links right in the policy.
Okay.
So if they had the digital copy, they could just look at where it says attendance zones, right?
Oh, wait, I see. All right. Sorry.
It's purple.
Maybe it's updated on the Groton Middle School.
Great, thank, and that's under the tab, new students?
Um, what it means, no, I think you can access it.
So this really was a policy that we had to update because we now have intra-district magnets. So when families move in, they either, you know, they can either sign up for a lottery if they don't wanna, you know, if they'd like to want to attend any of our schools or they have a regional, it's, they used to call them neighborhood schools, but our neighborhoods got bigger when we reduced the number of schools from ten to five. So the, the na, the area is a little larger that composes each of the schools and the schools are bigger, you know, they have more students in them. So I would just say that we had to make sure that we had that language in here so people fully understood, you know, how enrollment or placement took place. And we always really base it on our enrollment. The board has maximum number sizes that I've spoken about before for all the different grade levels and, you know, basically, you know, we try to keep it to like twenty for the very young children, you know, K one, twenty-two, and then twenty-four maxed out, you know, by high school. And it depends on programs and, and other things, but for the typical classroom or core classroom, those are the numbers that the board has always recommended. So knowing that, we really try, and especially being a very transient district where we have seven hundred and fifty come in in a year and six hundred leave, you know, we're always looking at different, all through the year, we're looking at enrollment and registering kids. It, you know, happens a lot more in the summertime into a new school year, but it happens all year long in Groton. So we, we don't want any class size to be over twenty-five, you know, and, you know, we don't want a twelve in a classroom in one school and twenty-five in another. So we're really balancing that.
You'll notice also, if I may, Jay, you notice also that the initial policy was drafted in ninety-three and revised in twenty fourteen. So Superintendent has looked at the entire policy manual and we find some policies that have not been changed since the late seventies. So we will be actively going through all of the older policies to review. Some may not need anything at all, some may need complete revision, and you'll see one later today that we're going to recommend excision.
And some may go away because legislation has gone away. So they've, actually, we've already done some of that work already.
So you, you can expect to see quite a few pieces coming through here.
A quick question. The, I had notes here also about, I think in the last meeting on the eighteenth, you mentioned that there's some graphic that shows students from certain geographic areas and how they transplant into the magnet districts.
So that was work that we authorized to happen and it's still in progress and we're actually gonna be meeting with them to look at that. So she's actually taken the map and she's been able to pinpoint where students are, you know, from different neighborhoods, where they're going to. So it's, it's really interesting to us as an intra-district magnet to make sure that, you know, access to all of our schools is available and that kids are choosing. So it's information, but we'll, as soon as that gets, I think we have a meeting coming up soon with them and we, you know, finalize that plan and we'll make sure you get it.
I would definitely like to see that.
It'll be interesting, yeah.
That representation.
I know there was a map in here, in the policy, I think I saw it.
Yeah, there, there's a map here, there's just no, there's no.
It just tells you the boundaries.
Right, just showing the boundaries. I was hoping to see how many, you know, people.
And this thing will show you the scatter plots, color-coded of where they're coming and where they're going.
Yeah, that, that'd be great.
So, yeah.
Also, there was a, my notes indicated, there was a meeting, a steering committee meeting on the nineteenth of December.
For?
Where that was gonna be discussed, like the overall magnet school program. Or there's, did that meeting happen?
Yeah, it did, yeah.
Are there minutes or anything that you can review?
I don't know, I can, I can look for them.
Okay.
For the steering committee.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We still have a motion on the floor?
We do, yeah. So we're still discussing P five-one-one-seven. Are there any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, so I realize this is embedded in the law, so you'll have to consider this, chalk this up to civil disobedience. I'll be voting against it because I object to racial bean counting. I know that it's part of the system, I'm saying no.
But this doesn't, it's really not about racial bean counting?
It's the softest form of racial bean counting, but it's in here and I choke on it. I will not vote for it. It's not like you need my vote anyway, let's be honest.
Do we have any other comments? If not, the motion on the floor is to approve policy P five-one-one-seven, elementary K through five, school placement as a second reading. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Rob and Dean are opposed? Any abstentions? So that carries. Next, Ian, would you be so kind as to read under new business, the motion for the first
Motion to approve policy three-two-five-zero, material fees as a first reading.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, and any discussion?
I have a question. Does this imply that clubs cannot fundraise? I'm just trying to understand like what motion. Does it imply that clubs can't fundraise because we are instructional programs free of charge, subject to reasonable rules concerning their care and use? Because I usually see like the lotics club fundraising or one of the sports teams fundraise. I'm just trying to understand like what does this encompass?
This is for instructional programs being free of charge.
Okay.
Subject, it doesn't say anything about clubs, so it's really our instructional programs that are providing free and appropriate access to education.
And so sports team falls in under clubs?
Clubs and sports, right.
Clubs and sports, okay.
So I think we do have specific policies for boosters, booster clubs and that kind of thing, so I'll check on that. But this is definitely for instructional, instruction fees for instruction. And this actual policy was adopted in nineteen seventy-nine. It's one of the ones you were talking about, Matthew, and needed to be updated. We do look at K policy to cross-reference with newer policy because that's updated annually. And we look at other districts as well, just to see what their policies are.
Jim, would you like me to look up and give you the references to the policies about clubs and fundraising?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure that like.
Okay, if you, if you wanted to, feel free.
Thank you.
Question. How does this policy relate to marching band?
So this is instructional, you know, I guess it would be for credit-bearing opportunities, but it, you know, there are boosters in, in other areas too. I mean, they've even talked about JROTC is having a booster club to help with some of their extra activities after school. So this, I think, is really for during the school day, but I can double-check with.
Well, marching band is credited as a.
That's right.
Instructional class.
That's right.
And they are currently charged a hundred dollar entrance fee?
I can check for you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion on the floor to approve policy P thirty-two fifty, material fees as a first reading? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions?
All abstain.
Ian abstains. And so that passes as a first reading. That simply means that it can go back for revision and will be brought back again for a second reading before it becomes permanent. All right, and Adrian, would you be so kind as to read the motion for the second item under new business?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve policy P five-one-four-one-point-five, suicide prevention intervention as a first reading.
And do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Dean, seconds. And any discussion?
This was one of the new legislations, I just want to point out, for suicide prevention. So we were just following the law with this one and making sure the language was correct in what we needed to have.
So I have a question or a comment. United Way has like two-on-one, is, should we make reference to that? That's like a statewide. I'm not sure about other United.
This is specific to suicide?
Yes.
And the nine-eight-eight is the number for the suicide?
Suicide, okay, because I know two-on-one also provides.
Right.
That type of service as well. Okay, that's fine.
Jay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm very adamant about having the language of our policies consistent. And I see places here, particularly in terms of the singular and the plural. And I don't. And I don't think that we should be using the singular is her. And I think that we should eliminate there wherever we can. And I have, I've done that in this policy, and I'll give it to Matthew so that, that's the only way I'll go for it.
May I respond? We had considered use, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you, Ian. We had considered the use of ones, O-N-E apostrophe S, as a non-gendered third-person singular. And it was suggested the majority seemed to feel that the AP style book allowed there. And that was the, I was overruled. As a matter of fact, I said I was channeling you.
Yes, yes, yes.
Saying that. I would guess if my colleagues are comfortable with changing it to ones, we can do that now. If not, we can talk about it when we need to get.
I'll have to look at it.
Well, I did send an email out to everyone about this on that night of the meeting. I was the one advocating for the singular use of they. I looked it up in the APA format. It is acceptable and recommended as a way to be gender nonspecific.
I'm still going to vote against it.
Okay.
There was a lot of discussion around that, Ian, I recall. Trying to be very, you know, careful with our language.
Well, are we allowed to make an amendment to a motion?
Always.
Well, not always. In this case, yes.
Keeping in mind that this also can go back to policy because this is a first reading, that it can go back to policy for further revision.
And they come back.
But it's up to you. We'd have to vote on the amendment and then the, the main motion.
I would make an amendment. If it would disturb you, I will hold off until our policy meeting. If it did not disturb you, I would make an amendment that we, wherever the word there or they occurs in the use of a singular subject and object, that we use the word ones, which is.
There are places where you, that's probably not going to work.
Okay, so why don't we just send it back to committee?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We can go through the first, and then, because the next, we'll have a policy committee, and then we'll come back for a regular meeting.
Again, the only reason I'm saying that is for consistency. I know, I know what that, that they is acceptable to AP. But that's my objection. It's just for consistency.
I'll tell you what, since I didn't mark this one up, it'll be on March 1st.
Any other comments or concerns, questions?
Yeah, I would just, I did, the email I did send with the APA style does go into some significant detail as far as, like, how they can be used in a singular form. And actually, it may be the thing we want to focus on in order to create consistency across all our policies moving forward.
Okay. Hearing no further questions. The motion on the floor is to approve policy P 5141.5, suicide prevention intervention as a first reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? So, that passes as a first reading. The next item, Matthew?
Oh, well.
Would you like to read item three under new business?
I will do my very best. I would move that we rescind policy P 4131.5, continuing education unit CEUs.
And do I hear a second?
Second, Thomas.
Okay. And any discussion on this?
Just that the state no longer authorized the CEU, so this is one that's become obsolete.
And we did discuss this in the policy committee meeting to some length. It, we did establish that basically professional development is supported and encouraged, required under different aspects of contracts and state law. So, it's no longer applicable in this context.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, then the motion on the floor is to approve the rescinding of policy 4131.5, continuing education units. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, that passes. And Andrea, do you wish to read the next?
I don't read all of them.
Okay. Then I will go to Jen. Would you be so kind as to read item four?
Sure. Like to put a motion on the floor to recognize February 5th, 2024, through February 9th, 2024, as School Counselor Appreciation Week, and to direct the superintendent of schools to send a letter of appreciation to school counselors.
Andrea seconds. And is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this, is this, we're recognizing school counselors one time? Or is this supposed to be an annual recognition?
It usually is an annual. We almost every month are recognizing someone, and so they've gone through a list that the board has authorized over time. And each month, there's someone that we're recognizing. So, it's like the school counselor month, this month of February.
I'm just wondering if, because it has two specific dates that will be passed in two weeks or three weeks, should this just say annually the second week of February or something like that?
I mean, I think we could do these annually. It's just a matter of keeping track of them, and from one board to another, you know, over time, are they going to remember? I mean, we can put it on the calendar to remember. I think it also, when we do this, it also really validates that particular group out loud in public to, to recognize them in a special way. But we do, I do send them out to them personally, and then I put them in the board notes so the board sees, and then I put them in the weekly update so everybody else sees, too. So, I try to really make sure that they're honored. It's a nice reminder for me, but when it's coming up. But we, I mean, we could keep track of it another way. That would be up to the group. But it is kind of nice to validate, you know, people in public.
I have to say that I was reading this, and I didn't realize that that was the one you were asking about. So, I love doing this for all of the different groups that are.
Support.
Yeah, support the kids in Groton. So, I apologize to the counselors. Thank you.
I am in support of the idea of adjusting the dates so that if this becomes an annual thing, I mean, is that what we're voting on? Is it annual or?
Well, I think we're voting on to recognize them coming up this year.
Okay.
And that's the date. The dates sometimes do change. Sometimes the weeks are the same, but the dates will change year to year. So, and some are recognized by a week-long celebration summit, it's a specific day. It's really kind of an interesting thing when you're in the midst of trying to, you know, do the recognition.
I would also say that, you know, as I said last month when we voted to recognize Maintenance Workers' Day, that this is all well and good, and I do support, and, you know, I obviously, you know, support anyone that supports the students. But I also would like to encourage the board to remember this recognition and appreciation when it comes time to, you know, look at salaries, benefits, scheduling, other supports for these staff members. So, it's all well and good to have a day or a week, but where it really matters is in other areas, too.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
What would the total number of, do you know off the top of your head, the number of school counselors there are?
I think we have six at the middle school, six at the high school, and one and a half career counselors. So, 13 and a half, I believe. But that's just off the top of my head.
Okay. My question is, is there a way to instead of, say, send a letter, to bring a letter to them so you can do it face-to-face instead of feeling like they're just getting a letter in the mail? I feel like that would.
I could. With some groups, it's even larger than that.
Of course.
And, you know, I always try to do it fairly across the board.
Of course.
But I, I do make a practice of when I'm in the buildings, I do recognize staff, and I, you know, I absolutely thank them at all times. Not even on their day. Sometimes not on their day.
Okay. There's no other discussion. The motion on the floor is to recognize February 5th, 2024, through February 9th, 2024, as School Counselor Appreciation Week, and to direct the superintendent of schools to send a letter of appreciation to the school counselors. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? And that carries. All right. At this point, we have added an agenda item earlier in the meeting, and this is where we will discuss the issue of the decision to reduce hours of the, of the tutors and why that is necessary, and what other possible actions, remedies we could take.
We've been taking.
And, you know, how did we get here? Where are we going?
So, I think that we really have been clearly communicating to this board, especially having, you know, a new finance director with Dave, that we have had challenges. He's shared a document to the board, to the finance committee, of all the different challenges we faced in this year and that we're facing in next year, hence the 8.27% increase in the budget. There have been, and I, I think of that blue document that you have, Dave, that really shows everything escalating and really no relief that whether we're talking about benefits and health, the health situation in the health reserve, whether we're talking about the salaries, or whether we're talking about the funds for the events, the, the property damages that we've had, everything seems to be escalating. So, knowing going into it, even early in the fall, and we were letting the finance committee know this, that we really wanted to get through this year and manage this year. And at the same time, we knew we had the ARPESR cliff. We just didn't know that we would have to really have that close out so soon in the year. So, really, getting the ARPESR adjusted and closing it out was monumental. And there are maybe a few, few things we're able to do towards the end of the year. There have been positions that we have not posted, that we've been able to have substitutes in. So, there have been across the board. Someone had mentioned security guards, and there were positions that, when people left, we, we just didn't fill them again. So, we've really taken a hard stance. I know the, and I'm just telling you the global story that, you know, it, it really is strategic planning of, you know, making sure that we can cover our bases all the way to the end of the year and not have to go back to the town to ask for funds. With that being said, you know, we looked at, you know, a plan to be able to get through the year, and we did not want to give anybody pink slips, or we didn't want to cut any positions. So, therefore, with the tutor positions, we thought if we had the contractual six-hour day, workday, that we would be able to make it through to the end of the year. It was set out as a temporary solution, and it was made really through, you know, our directors group to, to make sure that we can get through. And that was just one of the many different things. I know the principals have cut back on their site budgets, and they've held off on some of their spending. We've looked at grants and other opportunities that, where they had, you know, funding for other, some of these other things to be able to support. And we're just trying to be very careful, and I, I hear what the tutors are saying. We're actually meeting with the head of the, Lori Lapine, who's in charge of HR, has been in, in contact with the, the union leadership. And we're actually meeting on Wednesday. But she had really, before this rolled out, she had been in communication with them to let them know. So. I just, I'm just telling you what I, you know, to be true.
And Beverly, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Jay. What baffles me, Susan, is last week when we had our budget meeting and the principals all came, they were saying how useful the tutors were and how thankful they had the tutors, and what a big difference the tutors made in the lives of the students. And now to hear that, I don't know how you, that you cut tutors' hours, I'm confused. And how did you decide to cut the tutors and not look at other positions that you may have cut instead of people that are working with students?
So, Beverly, it was, we did not want to cut positions, and there were positions across the board in other areas that were not refilled. So, we've really done a job across the district, but we've tried to do it in the, in, you know, in the least restrictive way so that, you know, we did not want to cut any one person's position. So, we were able to, in the contract, it says up to six hours for a workday, so.
I'm still a little confused, and, and to be honest, I didn't like the fact that we were blindsided, that the board did not know until this evening, unless I missed something, that this was happening. And I don't like that. I try not to blindside the superintendent, and I would hope the superintendent, we're trying not to let the board be blindsided with these issues.
And I apologize if you felt blindsided, but I, you, I did inform the board that we do have, we're trying to be really efficient and really monitor our spending, and some of it is really not even in our control, so.
So, if you'll just indulge me for just one second.
Sure.
There is no doubt that this board supports our paras, our tutors, our teaching staff. And so, I personally would like to suggest that we sit down and determine what alternatives there are. What could we, where could we get money, including and up to going back to the town council? This is a fiscal cliff that we knew was coming, but the timing was not completely clear due to, you know, the number of hours that obviously payroll takes up. It's not always, you don't always know how many hours you're going to need for a student population. And now that we're coming off of the ARPESR, I think, you know, it is not unprecedented to go back to the town council and say that we have a, an issue in the current budget year and just lay that out. But at the same time, we need to have a plan for where else, you know, we could find the funds to support, you know, frankly, the, the folks that are in the classroom and serving our students. And I know every one of you feels just as strongly about that as I do. And I'll commit to adding meetings, whatever we have to do to, to get to this.
How anybody in education could call this least restrictive is beyond me. It's the most restrictive idea that has ever come before this board. It has everything to do with children and children learning. I'm speechless about this. When I was a principal, and this was a long time ago, Dr. Riley was the superintendent at that time, the administrators voted to take no increase in salary. When I think of what our tutors do and what our paras do in the classroom, if you've ever been in a special ed classroom, you would know that is the last place you should cut. And I stress, I stand strongly with that.
Yeah, I would just echo my colleague's sentiments on that, and also Bev Washington's sense of outrage and confusion as we did just sit through the last budget meeting where, you know, all the sites were. you know, all the sites were, you know, not sounding any alarms at all. And then we see this article in the paper where it's celebrating tutors and how much work they've done in order to help boost up, you know, diversity in upper level classes. So again, there's like this dichotomy and cognitive dissonance. And to the chair's point, why not go back to the town? The town has had an influx of money coming from opioid funding, from nip bottle funding, from, I don't know, there's, there's a whole lot of money that just went through the town council in the last six, eight months, and got dispersed into various places, and if you read the fine print, could have easily been diverted to the schools. It would have been fit under that umbrella. So I am confused, frustrated, outraged, and, you know, I would love to recognize a member of the audience here who's had their hand patiently raised, if that's allowable, Mr. Chair, under the rules, and if it is not allowable under the rules, then I would make a motion to suspend the rules so that we can hear what they have to say.
So I hear a motion to suspend the rules to recognize a member of the audience. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so that requires two-thirds. So all in favor of recognizing the president of the paraprofessional and tutors union, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. There is that again? Okay, so we will recognize the president of the paro union. Would you like to come to the podium?
Mr. Chair, I voted yes because of the person's position. I would vote no if it were just a member of the public, because public are invited to listen and not necessarily participate. Given this particular individual's role, I will vote in favor of this.
Thank you for the clarification.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Corbial, and I am the president of the Par educator Union for Groton Public Schools. I also live at 46 Ivy Court in Groton. I just wanted to put on record, I, we were told, the union, when the tutors were told. So when we were saying that we were told in a timely manner, that's just the only thing that I would like to state on record, and I would also like to state on record that if you're saying they are put down to six hours, you're also not taking into account that you're taking away their half an hour for lunch, so it turns into five and a half hours a day they will be working. So I just, when you get the things across the board, that yes, they're physically in the building for six hours, we have a half an hour lunch that is taken away from us. So that is the only stipulation I wanted to clarify. I'm just coming up here to be a clarification at this point, and that's all I wanted to mention.
And I know we are going to be meeting on Wednesday.
We are, we are, but I just needed to clarify that, I know you said you thought I knew, so I'm just up here as a clarification person at this point.
Okay.
And I'm not up here to discuss or dispute anything for any of you at all, that's for a different time. I know we all had our things. I just wanted to make sure I clarified that I was told the same day that they were, and that they're actually put down to five and a half hours. Yes, it says six, so when you're looking at our contract that says you can go as low as six, you have to take into the account the half an hour that will be taken away from them for our lunches, in that shifting role that you gave the admins to do for their hours. So that's all I wanted to put on record, is that you all understood that part, and then we'll have, we'll discuss our other stuff later, on a later date.
Right.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you for sitting through this meeting. You feel our pain with how long they can go. So I also would like to point out that at the earlier meeting of the finance committee, that it was disclosed that the town of Groton has collected over $10 million in impact aid payments, and those payments go directly to the town. Now, I do understand, and I don't want to, I don't want to make this into a political football, the impact aid statements, funds do reduce the local taxpayer burden, and at the end of the day, the town still provides a budget. But when we go, you know, if, if, if it's the will of the board to pursue this with the town, it's important to understand that that much money did come back, and a lot of it is over and above what was projected. Furthermore, my understanding is that the special education excess funds, over and above what we projected and were budgeted to spend, were reimbursed by the state, and that those checks are going directly to the town as well, and I believe that everyone should have that full disclosure, and understanding how much money that is that's coming to the town that's meant to, to support education. And again, I'm very appreciative to our local taxpayers for supporting the building of the new schools, and for supporting our budget every year, and I'm not saying that for some reason that, that is morally owed to us, but I just think everyone needs to understand the sources of these income streams, and how they're being allocated, to understand the full picture. Matthew, and then Ian, and then Andrea. And then Dean.
When I saw the letter that was sent to us, I don't know what's true or not, but I took it at face value, and it was terribly distressing. And I feel that Andrea voiced very calmly some of the turmoil I felt, but I didn't want to react in outrage. I wanted to try to understand how this happened, and I have a hypothesis. The superintendent is in charge of operations. We have nothing to do with operations. We have to do with policy and budget. So I can understand the superintendent in good faith, thinking that this was an operational decision. Comma, on the other hand, when an operational decision involves budget, significant budgetary operation, or policy, or in this case, both policy and budget, I would have hoped that the superintendent would have thought of sharing it first with the finance committee, if not the full board, for a discussion. So the proximate issue is the question of tutors. The global issue is, I don't want to say mutual respect, and in suggesting that there's not mutual respect, because I know there's mutual respect, but this boundary of operations versus policy and budget is sometimes clear, and sometimes it's a little bit amorphous. So I would just urge our superintendent, when there are questions, this came up with masks a couple of years ago, should that have been an operational decision, or should that have been a policy decision, just, just to be ultra-sensitive to whether there's some policy or budgetary issue that's involved that we should be talking about so we don't get blindsided, and I say that with great affection and appreciation.
Thank you, I do appreciate that.
All right, just to be clear on what you were discussing, $10 million in impact aid was sent back to the town?
Five million, I think the other was the ECS was the other.
Yeah, I'm sorry, impact aid and ECS. However, at finance, there was a detailed breakdown.
We've been talking about that in finance, and we've been talking about the struggles. We didn't get into some of the operational, but in hindsight, I should have brought it and, and shared it with you. I apologize, and I, I certainly want what's best for our students and what's best for our school community. So if there's another way I can work it out, I would be happy to do that.
Could I, could I, from my own knowledge, try to clarify what I understand this $10 million to be? We have a history of certain grants, and we know there's a variation in some grants. We have, we, we know that they're usually around X, but they could be $50,000 or $100,000 less, they could be $50,000 or $100,000 more. And so, to be conservative in coming up with a budget, we don't want to say we're going to get a half million dollars, even if we did last year, and put in a half a million dollars and spend it to find out we only get $300,000. That would be fiscally imprudent. So we say $300,000, and these are just examples, this is not a hard number. Well, then $500,000 comes in this year. Though that money is earmarked for education, the law, as I understand it, or the practices I understand it, is that all of that money goes to the town general budget, and therefore, that money is absorbed in the town's general budget, and maybe some of it comes back to education. I haven't been here long enough to know, to say anything globally, but I'm hearing that over time, this is not one year, over time, a recent, recent amount of time, the total of money that's come back to the school, back from money that was designated for school, has gone back to the town and not automatically, or even, even will give real consideration if you have a need, because lord knows, they know we have needs that we've been asking for. Is that accurate? Well, yes, but keep in mind, there is no, legally, the money does go to the town, and one can make the argument, they're then going to use the money next year to support the budget we bring them. So I'm not suggesting there's anything nefarious. Absolutely. What I'm suggesting is there are income streams that we could refer to when we go to them and make our case, and if the case is strong enough, you know, let them weigh the facts. I'm not suggesting that we go over and raid the town.
And can I just add this?
It's all very legal, but.
I just want to interject here, because I wasn't quite finished, but what Matthew just raised up just reminded me of, of a thing that, a referral that I sent in a while back, and I will send again with more documentation on it, but essentially, there is a state law that allows us to create a non-lapsing fund that allows the Board of Ed to retain the money that's been assigned to education. So we would not get into this problem where we're depending on the good graces of the town to give back money that was initially identified as education money.
Yeah, but I'm not sure if legally, impact aid is allowed to go into that. So that's definitely something that we need to study.
Right.
And Dave has experience with this up in Hartford, can give us, you know, can give us more guidance on that.
So that was just an aside to respond to what Matthew said. I just want to get clear, so we had $5 million in ECS that is coming back to the town? Haven't I had a chance to?
Yeah, that was back in 2018, when there was talk about that ECS being cut back. So we predicted that we were going to get $5 million less, so it was like $19 million instead of the 25, and, and you just need to know that that number of 25 million has not changed at all for us. So it's been pretty steady, which I guess is a good thing, but it hasn't gone up for inflationary reasons. And we've been trying to get the impact aid closer to what the, the number is actually coming in, but it, we've been fortunate that it has come over each year by about $1 million. So you have another $5 million. And I do work with the town, I work with the town manager, we meet on a monthly basement and, basement, and monthly basis, and I, I'll reach out to him with things, and our, our team will meet, you know, Groton team will meet with his team, with the finance directors and the HR, to really discuss these matters. But to this point, I don't think that we've been able to get that, those funds back, you know, and even knowing that we have these facilities issues, but we're still working on that.
So is there a way to fix this now?
I would like to fix it, but I, you know, I'm continuing to, to work with them.
So the answer is no, there's no way to fix this now?
Well, I don't know that there is a way to fix it now.
But I definitely think we need to have a meeting.
We can certainly, we can certainly work towards fixing it, I would like to be able to do that.
The town does keep a contingency fund, and they do fourth quarter transfers all the time. So, I mean, could we issue a request?
That, that's what I was suggesting, is we go to the town council, if, if that's the will of the board, and I think we need to have a meeting where we discuss those implications.
But in the meantime, we have tutors that are losing 10 hours a week each, beginning Wednesday.
Five.
So, like, I, I would think we would need to move with more haste, is my feeling. But I, I know Dean raised his hand a while ago, so.
Yeah, well, first of all, we have Andrea, and then we have Jen, and then we have Dean, and then we have Bev.
I'll follow up with an email about this other stuff, could you get?
Thank you.
So, Andrea?
Okay. Beyond the role that the paras play, when I think about our cutting the salaries, and we are, even though it's the hours, we are cutting the salaries of hardworking people who are making the least in the district, and to me, beyond the idea that they are working with the most sensitive children in the district, the fact that we went to the least earning employees is unconscionable, in my view.
Thank you. Jen?
So I'd just like to reiterate what Beverly had said earlier. I mean, we have really good communication, we are usually informed of everything, and to not be notified or even made aware, especially being on the finance committee, I just feel like there could have just been a better form of communication to the board, because it's not, it's just not fair, like, like when you have employees, right, and I don't know what their contract is, because I wasn't part of that, and I'm new, but we still need to respect people and understand that bills have to be paid, and necessarily like two weeks' notice, and like, maybe it's just not appropriate. So that's my concern.
Dean?
This will seem like an odd point to make it this time, but I'll make it anyway, because I, it means something to somebody. It was clarified at the finance and facilities committee meeting, but hasn't been brought up here. The context, when you was chair, when you said, when we're talking about this $10 million, it was presented, and you could go further back in time, I'm sure, and find similar numbers. That's over a six-year period, just so people are clear, that's over a six-year period. You also have to understand that that's heavily weighted, if you're, if you're thinking about the magnitude of the number. So as soon as you say there's $10 million sloshing around, Christmas time, but of the $10 million, really only 5.6 over a six-year period is what you would say would be the, do the average. So it's, it's still a big number. It's maybe about a million or $900,000 on average, if you, if you subtract out, if you adjust for the year 2018, because that was an extraordinary year, that was the first time that I can remember where Hartford said, no, you're not going to get your 25 million, be prepared. So we did, and then we got socked, and we got the money anyway. So, so we budgeted for, you know, for a lot less. So that's a, that's an odd year to consider, but that $10 million, even if you wanted to consider 2018, is spread out over, over six, just to provide some context. I, I want, I want to make one other point, too, and I've said this before many times, the school system's bloody expensive, it's the most expensive thing that the town does, and as long as you're going, no matter how you look at it, it's going to be, we're going to be spending a lot of money on schools. So if you're going to do it, do it right, as a general principle.
Thank you, Jay. Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, I was always under the impression that impact aid was given to us in lieu of taxes that the military community pays the town.
You're right. In essence, the Department of Defense, the federal government, supports the town for the sake of its educating the students. So the impact aid dollars go to the town directly for the sake of educating the kids, and we try to do as best an estimate as we can to figure out what that amount is going to be. So in a sense, people around the table have mentioned, you know, it's been coming in more than that for the past six years. more than that for the past six years. So I think we've done a better job forecasting, Bev, but in essence, the extra revenue that comes to the town, you know, in both those cases of the ECS and then the impact aid over time, has gone to the town to a general fund instead of coming to education, which, you know, it is to support, it's pupil impact aid, I see it as, you know, for education. So, but I have been in communication with the town manager and, you know, but it is, it goes directly to the town to take care of the education. That's why when we look at the revenue side of the budget, it's really important that we try to make as accurate a prediction as we can.
Now, I hear the conversation from the other board members, and I agree with everyone, but my concern now is, what are we going to do to help the tutors? Now, I personally would be in favor of giving them back every single hour that we took away from them, not we, the administration took away from them. That's what I would be leaning towards right now, and then going to the town and asking for the money. But I don't have a say in it, but I'm just voicing my opinion, because those tutors are very important to the, to our students. And to cut their hours, I'm sure, we knew this was going to happen, Susan. I've been on the board for two years, we've been saying, what's going to happen when all that funding goes away?
Right.
And I never thought we would cut tutors.
There were additional factors, as you know, that have really caused stress, and as superintendent, I would agree with you, and can make that happen tomorrow.
So, as time is of the essence on this, I'm, I'm going to ask the board's indulgence to add yet another agenda item. I would suggest that we add an item tonight that says that we shall go to the town council with an additional request in the current budget year. So...
I'd like to add something to that, Jay, and that we direct this, I don't know if we can direct the superintendent to reinstate those hours to the tutors.
I'm happy to do that, Beverly.
I would second all that.
All right, so...
I didn't hear that.
What is the motion on the floor?
Well, first of all, the motion would be to add the agenda item.
Oh, yeah.
So we'd have to agree to add the agenda item first, that would take two-thirds.
What, if I might?
Yep.
Do, do you necessarily need to add an, I mean, it'll happen, but I'm just, as a detail, do you actually need to have an agenda item? Because we've added in the topic of the tutor hours already. And with, under that topic, I think board members are free to make a motion that's related to that topic. But if you want to, if you want belts and suspenders, we can add yet another item.
Whatever.
It'll pass by two-thirds.
Right.
So...
I just want to write it down for Joe.
So we have a motion on the floor to add an agenda item, and I believe Ian seconded it.
Right.
So all in favor of adding this item to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Any abstentions? Okay. So, the motion, as I stated it, and is amended by Beverly, is that the Board of Education shall request a meeting with the town council to make a request for an additional appropriation within the current budget year and to rescind the decision to cut the hours of the tutors. Did I catch your wording properly, Beverly?
Say that again, rescind the decision?
Rescind the decision to, to cut the hours of the tutors.
Okay. So to reinstate the hours that they had had?
Yeah, to reinstate the hours that, that they had been scheduled.
Whatever the words are.
Do I have a second?
That's correct, Jay.
Okay. So Ian has seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion on the floor?
I was just wondering, just for my own clarification, so we would be rescinding that as of now?
Yeah.
So we're not going to cut their hours if we approve this? As of now, all right.
Any other discussion, clarification?
Just, this may not, I don't want to complicate this motion any further, but talking about this impact aid over the span of six years, I'm thinking something else we should do, or at least consider doing, is coming to an agreement with the town, that anything that comes in as impact aid is directly held for the Board of Ed, of Education budget, or directly funneled to us.
And excess revenue, like there's excess special ed monies that's coming in, that's been legislated, and that goes to the town, so those excess funds that are coming on behalf of education need to come to education.
Because we haven't even covered the special education excess cost reimbursement.
Right, so I, I think that's something that, that may warrant a larger working group or some sort of committee work.
Right.
But I believe what I'd like to see, just my own opinion, would be to see, like, again, maybe it's a non-lapsing fund, maybe not, there should be a reserve fund that is completely isolated from the town general fund, that is for this money coming in from the state, federal, wherever, that is designed, that is designated for supporting education. It should not sit in the general fund of the town where it could get, you know, death by a thousand cuts. It should be held in reserve for our budget.
I think there's definitely a larger question there. I think the, I think the immediate effect of this motion, should it pass tonight, is that we agree that we want to go for the, the special appropriation.
Right. The immediate, yeah, exactly. I don't want to...
That is the immediate need, but I, I agree with you that this needs to be a larger discussion.
I'll, I can write up a referral.
Yep. So, any other discussion, question, clarification? Okay, all in favor of the motion on the floor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? So that motion passes. Thank you very much.
And I will work with Jen Corbeal to get that information out to everyone. I thank the board, and I do apologize that I tried to do something to kind of rescue us. Next time, I'm coming to you first. Good idea.
No, I, I do realize that there's, there is an issue that you and the business manager are legally on the hook if we go over the budget at the end of the year, so I know that's a concern, but that's why...
I have to say...
We want to work with you to support our professionals.
Dave has done a phenomenal job, I have to tell you, because it was looking more dismal at the beginning of the year, but he has done a phenomenal job, I just want to say.
All right, so the final item on our agenda are letters, communications, and comments by board members on meeting items and any other items in their jurisdiction. Rob, do you have anything?
I do not.
Adrian?
No.
Dean?
I'll pass.
Okay. Jen?
Is this a moment for referrals, or does that come later?
You can send a referral at any time, 24 hours a day, through email.
Good, I have a list, a little list. I would like to see a, I, I would like to make a referral for an update on the financial literacy, the referral that I made a year, year and a half ago.
And how that interfaces with the state mandate?
And how that interfaces with the state mandate.
Yeah, it probably goes along very nicely.
Yes, it probably goes along very nicely. So that's referral. Previously, we had asked for some data on some retirement incentives that we had talked about in the executive session. If I get that data, that would be very sweet.
Can you send me a note on that to specifically, or send it to Jay?
Sure.
If you can get that specifically in writing, so I, I'm sure what you're trying to ask for.
Referrals in writing are helpful if you can get the details.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll do better, I'll try to do better. Bev talked about virtual, a virtual learn course, and I remember that Susan had talked about, oh, it'd be great if we, if we had a student that wanted Chinese, we're never going to hire a Chinese teacher, we just can't afford it, but could we, could we get an update on...
I will explore that with Kate Erickson, I will see her this week.
Okay, an update on that, update on our exchange program, and that's enough.
Ian?
Yes, so, for the sake of time, I'm not going to read the full statement, but, long story short, I did receive some communication regarding my choice to abstain from the vote on the paraprofessional contract last month, and I just wanted to state that, you know, the reason why I did that was, and I spoke with the chair after the meeting, I was hoping for the chance to explain this before the vote, but there was no opportunity for discussion. But the reason I chose to abstain from that was because I felt like, you know, as a new board member, I was, my voice was not included in that negotiation process. And I feel like the contract, we need to do more. So, I've been doing some research and some other conversations around, I know that there is, you know, there are some things that could be done, such as a memorandum of understanding or agreement, where, you know, we could offer some things if we feel like there's something lacking, or something that was missed. I also, and I'll send this out in an email to the whole board, just so it's stated clearly, because I'm just kind of giving a synopsis now, but I think we need to think more carefully about how we do our negotiations. I know there's a committee that does most of the negotiations, but how far that, I'm unclear as to how much the whole board has input on that negotiations committee, you know, and I know that with this last contract, it progressed from regular negotiations to mediation to arbitration.
It never got to arbitration.
Never got to arbitration.
We were able to mediate, it was a long process.
Okay.
It was a lot of hard work on both teams, yeah.
And so I guess I'm, you know, moving forward, we're going to have more contracts to deal with, and I'm just curious to know, like, you know, does the whole board have an opportunity to weigh in on the choice to go to mediation? Or the choice to, to, you know, do we have, negotiations committee is, is the team on the ground, but do they come back to the whole board in executive session to say, "This is where we are, how would you like us to proceed?" Does that happen? So the whole board can own the decision?
It depends, it depends on the board.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that's something that maybe we should look at policy and procedure to maybe correct up, because if I'm going to be a voting member of this board, and I'm going to be out in the community having to hold the water for the decisions that this board makes, then we should all have equal participation in those decisions throughout the process. I understand that only a small team can be on the ground in the trenches, but there needs to be some procedure so that we can have some input as to when things progress one way or escalate another. That should be, if we're going to vote as a board, then we should all have some input on that. And, let's see, I'm going to send forward a referral on the non-lapsing fund, I've done some research on that, there's state law that supports that, and there's a whole procedure that's required, also in conjunction with the town council, town council has to approve it, has to write the ordinance first, and then there's a whole process of setting up the fund, but a lot of towns have done it and have been very successful with it, and it could head off a lot of problems, such as we're dealing with tonight. And I've also been looking into the policies regarding recording and broadcasting of meetings, so I'll send forward a referral for that. And there is also the publishing of meetings. There is, I've done some research on that, and I've found some state laws that are probably should be considered, so that we make sure that we're in compliance. And, and I already discussed the, the map, the attendance zone map with the tracking of transplants.
Right.
And, so I'll be looking for that, and also the minutes from that steering committee meeting that occurred on the 19th. And in the budget special meeting, we talked about intake, process, and placement, in specific to like military children, or transients coming in, what the process is with that, so I'd like to, you know, get some, do we have that written out somewhere? Is that something that could be reviewed?
So we, we have it in policy and regulations, and there is a compact, a military compact that says that military students can be signed up to attend our school with a set of orders, and then followed up by where they're going to be living. And there's all kinds of things with that compact that, you know, are specific to military children.
All right, thank you. And I did also mention the comparative, moving forward, I'd like to see the comparative chart for the health insurance situation. Again, that may not be apropos to this year, but moving forward, I think it'd be a good thing to look at. And we also talked at one point about budget data tracking software, or the ability to have expandable budgets that we can look at online, and that also could lead towards a data portal. I know the town council has considered that in the past, with the town budget, having online access for people to review. So I'd be curious to know what, just get a breakdown on what that would cost, what that would look like, the initial infrastructure investment, and then, you know, the annual And, what are your... Oh, I got some communication about looking at the career counselor position. We have a half position at the high school, and I'm wondering, like, is that coming up in our budget item? Is that something that we are thinking about?
Yes, actually, will come up next week.
Thank you. And in regards to publishing of, oh, the financial literacy classes, you answered my question earlier tonight when you said it was an elective at this point, not required for graduation.
But now it's legislated, so it will be required.
It will be required.
So we have to go back to policy, though, to readjust all of that.
Okay, I look forward to doing that.
Yeah, and it'll have to go to curriculum.
All right.
So, yeah.
And so that would be, is there any sort of, well, that, that'll be a conversation for later, when we can discuss it. And I just also want to, I do want to thank you for the efforts as far as getting the jackets, the coats for the ROTC, I'm glad that came to fruition and has been completed. And I did get a question asking about the AED machine placements in the school, if it's been all acquisition and placement efforts, are they complete? Are we done with that, or is it still on?
No, they're not complete, but, you know, that would also be additional funding that would be necessary for that.
Okay. And one last communication I received was in regards to the YouTube channel where we broadcast our meetings, and there used to be a Groton Board of Ed YouTube channel that had all the meetings on it, and there's a Groton Public Schools channel that had all the student events. Now, the two have merged. The Groton Board of Ed's channel is no longer, if you go there, it just says, "All this content has been removed." You go to the Groton Public Schools channel, and you can find the meetings underneath the playlist, which is great, but it only goes back so far as January of 2023, whereas what was on the historical channel prior to the change, the videos went back as far as 2016 or so.
I'll have to meet with staff on that, to be honest with you.
Yeah, so the question...
That would be a staffing, I would have to find out from the staff how that all works and...
All right, so yeah, the question was like, what was the history on, like, what changed? How did they, how, why did the content get changed, and how did so much content get left on the shelf?
I, I'd have to ask that question.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know the answer, but I do know that we've tried to get things to be more YouTube-oriented and to live stream, you know, even this meeting happening here, I don't know, is this being livestreamed? Mark?
It's just on Zoom.
Okay, but eventually, it will be livestreamed.
If we go back to the central office to room 11, that's now all wired up for that.
Right. So that is a goal. So that is the goal.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll send this all out in a series of emails to share with everyone.
Okay.
Especially with the state law stuff that I looked up.
There's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Beverly, did you have anything to add?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I wanted to clarify something. I don't know whether the negotiating committee in the past historically has done this, whether there's been a pattern. I do recall, it's not as though the negotiating committee is a freelance outfit, is free-ranging out there and makes decisions and binds. They they have gone back, the committee has gone back to the whole board. It would look something like the meeting where you participated in executive session with the board's attorney. We have had these meetings. They don't happen very often. It's when contracts come up, when there are inflection points in the negotiations. Some things are fairly routine. There's an update to the board. Sometimes there is, there's an impasse. And that's also brought to the board's attention. So it's not as though the board is not plugged in. It's, I don't have, I don't keep track of it. I mean, I've been stuck on negotiations for a number of years. I haven't been the senior member on it, the ranking member or anything like that, so. But I do recall instances where the negotiating committee, where basically the board itself with the, with the attorney, you know, has had executive sessions with respect to labor contracts, so.
I think that state has now moved that for reasons I don't understand, to non-meetings. I'm being told by our attorney now, we don't do it in executive session anymore, but it's a non-meeting. But I think it has been different depending on the board, and I'm certainly open to it being more transparent to the board members.
Well, yeah, why not? It's an item of business like everything else.
Exactly, and it's a major one.
Hey, Jay?
Yes. Yes.
I think negotiations is still an executive session item. I listened to the town council when they had the FOI guy, and he said that's one of the reasons you can go into executive session is to talk about negotiations.
Floyd said that law changed, but I'm not going to get into all of that right now, but Floyd says it is now a non-meeting. I don't know what the difference is. So anyway, I would like to just mention, obviously, we're all in receipt of the same number of communications through email. I also had the pleasure to attend the Martin Luther King Equi-Medical Service. And thank you to Dr. Ackerman for everything she does to organize that. And then last Thursday, at the central office in the Keith Ackerman Art Gallery, which was very well attended. And Matthew, Ian, Counselor Bordelone, we're all there. And that was very, very well done. And Adrian, yep. All right.
Well, there's actually one more. One more, I have one more communication. Sorry, I just saw this email here. There was a question about the high school restroom policy that, I'll forward it along.
Would you forward it to me?
Yeah, there's, there's an interesting article in the student publication about that.
Oh, I'd like to read it. Thank you.
Done.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Thank you, everyone.